Welcome, everyone. I call the September 7th, 2021 Bothell Regular City Council Meeting to order for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Please unmute your microphone and turn off your video while we display the banner. I'll give everyone a moment to do that. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do the flag.
Thank you, everyone. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge the remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign-up sheets provided by the City Clerk's Office via the link in the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. At this point, we'll take a moment to roll call, take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name. Unmute.
You're muted, Laura.
Sorry. I was telling Deputy Mayor Zorn, she was muted. Okay, sorry. Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Dorr.
Here.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some of our meeting guidelines. For all of our attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphones when not speaking. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of two of our community members, Jim McAuliffe and Sharon Dimmitt. Jim McAuliffe passed away on August 9th. He was husband to Councilmember McAuliffe. They were married 58 years and raised six children. Jim was an avid gardener and entrepreneur, starting many businesses and supporting Rosemary with her political career. Jim also contributed to many organizations, including North Shore School Foundation and the North Shore Senior Center. Making friends wherever he went, Jim will be sorely missed. Sharon was the president of the Bothell Historic Museum. She passed away in late July. She worked tirelessly for the community and was a true supporter of historic preservation for Bothell. She also previously served on the Landmark Preservation Board. Her leadership of the Bothell Museum and volunteer work in the community will be greatly missed. Onto our meeting agenda. Are there any other changes to tonight's meeting agenda? All right, seeing none. I believe we have public engagement opportunities. So September is Puget Sound Starts Here Month. Take the Puget Sound Starts Here pledge and learn how you can help protect local water quality through simple everyday actions. More at www.bothellwa.gov/PSSH. Salmon Watchers volunteer to monitor a local stream this fall to help UW Bothell collect information about salmon. More info at www.bothellwa.gov/salmonwatchers. And with that, we also have a proclamation for Puget Sound Starts Here Month. So Puget Sound starts here. Whereas Puget Sound and the waterways that connect our mountains to the shore contribute in numerous ways to Bothell's economic infrastructure, quality of your life, and our natural resources. And whereas the city council's environmental sustainability goal includes protecting the natural environment through integrated natural resource management. And whereas Bothell has joined with state agencies and more than 750 local organizations, governments, and tribes to engage residents in protecting and improving local and regional water quality. And whereas the United States Environmental Protection Agency acknowledged National Pollution Prevention Week each September in honor of the United States Congress passing the Pollution Prevention Act in 1990. And whereas the city of Bothell implements programs that aim to reduce and prevent pollution generated by businesses, residents, and municipal operations by partnering with the community to protect our environment, including wetlands, streams, lakes, and rivers. And whereas Puget Sound Starts Here Month and Pollution Prevention Week are opportunities for the public to learn how they can help clean up Puget Sound and our local waterways. Now, therefore, I, Liam Olson, mayor of Bothell, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as Puget Sound Starts Here Month in the city of Bothell, Washington, and call upon all citizens to protect natural resources by reducing and eliminating sources of water pollution. Move on to.
Mayor Olson, I believe we have Kristi Cox, Surface Water Program Coordinator here to say a few words about the proclamation.
Excellent. I will gladly accept this. Good evening and thank you, Mayor Olson, Deputy Mayor Zorn, and councilmembers. On behalf of city staff, our local partners, and the Bothell community, I will gladly accept the Puget Sound Starts Here proclamation. And I appreciate council's support of improving local water quality for future generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keep up the great work. All right, onto staff briefings. We have Urban 3 webinar. So I'll believe I'll turn it over to our interim city manager, Erin Lenhart, for introductions.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and city council. One of the budget items that the city council will be discussing this fall is a land value analysis from Urban 3. And in preparation for that session, we've invited Joe Minicozzi from Urban 3 here this evening to spend an hour with the council and help the council understand what Urban 3 does and what this type of analysis would provide for you. So if there isn't enough time this evening, we can have Joe back at a future date. Just recognizing that you have a full agenda this evening and it's your first night back. So if there are no questions for me, I will turn it over to Mr. Minicozzi.
Thank you, Erin. You can hear me okay? Check, awesome. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And I speak in pictures. It's easier for me to tell the story with images and explain kind of what we do and how we do it. But also, I guess, the bigger question is why we do this. We're known for these computer models, visualization of economic performance of cities. But really, there's a story that starts with where I live, which is Asheville, North Carolina. I live up in the mountains of western North Carolina. We're known for bluegrass music, the Blue Ridge Mountains, but also our beer. We're 90,000 people. We have 40 breweries. We drink a lot, I guess. And like any quirky little mountain town, we have men dressed as nuns on tall bikes that eat fire. It's your typical little place. But Asheville didn't start this way. Asheville, like a lot of American cities, cratered in the 1970s and 80s. We actually were the second largest city in North Carolina by the time the Depression hit. And then we basically just mothballed ourselves. These are shots of downtown Asheville from not too long ago. That's a 1996 Chevy Celebrity right there. And like a Greek choir, our community just didn't have faith in what we could be or what we were as a city. They just basically said, we're rural mountain people. We're not urban. Don't even try that. There's a much longer story here that actually starts with the city doing work, a lot of community activists. But my story is tied to this guy, Julian Price, who actually lived in Seattle for a while, but he was originally from Greensboro, North Carolina, and he came from a family with great means. And they asked him to come back home and he basically stopped in Asheville. And he used his inheritance to start a for-profit real estate development company. So it was about a $15 million real estate development company. 75% of the money went into sticks and bricks, fixing buildings, and 25% went into investment in businesses. So seeding entrepreneurs, the first vegetarian restaurant, things like that. So this is one of our buildings before and after, and is basically making housing downtown. We were told this would never work, the banks wouldn't finance it. But there was 99% leased up from the day that we opened our doors. But really, the story behind all of this is what we were doing to communicate this information. That if we're doing this as a real estate developer, what does it mean for our community? How do we add value to our community? And what I would learn in this process is that we just basically didn't understand real estate. That our community was talking about things that we want, narratives that we knew, but we didn't understand really what cities were as an economic engine. So to put it in terms, when you talk to a farmer, they're always talking in economic terms. What's the crop yield per acre, water per acre, all of that? So if we do the same thing with the building, this is one of the buildings that we rehab. So thank you, city, for the garbage can, the bike rack, two benches in the street tree. We were accused of being subsidized because the city invested in the streetscape. So thanks, city, thanks for that. We took the taxable value from $300,000 to $11 million. So what the community got was a 3,500% increase in taxes. So that same building now produces 3,500% more revenue. So do you have a 401K plan that does that? No. But then people's biases. They'd say, well, Joe, that's cute and everything, that's $11 million. We got this Walmart over here at $20 million. Okay, fair enough. But it took 34 acres for that Walmart to happen versus our building, 9.2 acres. So it's really an apples and oranges argument if you just use the gross number. So per acre, we're producing 100 times more property taxes. We're producing double the sales taxes. Who would have thought that a tattoo parlor, a beauty salon, and a furniture store is more productive than a Walmart in retail sales production? We have more residents than they do. They don't have any residents at all, and we also have more jobs. So if you just stack things up per acre, you can start to see the value and the potency that the urban environment produces for communities. Or conversely, the suburban sprawl environment actually drains your wealth and drains your economics. It's that simple. And I was presenting this, and I think it was 2009, it was the Smart Growth Conference in Seattle. And I said to everybody, I said, look, y'all are in Washington. I mean, if you could grow something in Washington, what would you grow? Wheat or marijuana? You grow the cash crop, right? This joke works in a lot of states these days. But I'm just basically using this as a cute paraphrase to basically understand economic performance. This isn't complex math that I'm doing here. This is efficiency analysis. So think of it, let's use a different way of looking at it. If we were to talk about cars, could you imagine if I said, my truck gets 650 miles per tank? It's awesome. You'd immediately laugh at me and you're like, Joe, that's not efficiency. All tanks are different sizes. We say per gallon, and the numbers change, and we should all be driving BMW Acedos. It's that simple. If we understand this for a $3 commodity, we should understand this for a $30,000 commodity. And also realize your land is limited. So at that same conference in Seattle, I actually stood in front of the audience with my hand in the air. And these are colleagues of mine, friends, peers, and we're all working city planning or economics or greenways, affordable housing. And I had this quote from Mark Twain, "A person who won't read has no advantage over one who can't read." And as I stood there with my hand in the air, I asked everybody in the room, who has read your local tax policies to understand how property tax assessment works and your taxation system inside your communities? Anyone? And not a single person raised their hand. And what I realized is that we're basically operating functionally illiterate about our tax system and how it's connected to land use. So taxes matter because taxes pay for stuff. So this is what's going on with our downtown. We didn't get a new building in our downtown until 2008. So basically, that value that you see there is the improvement of our downtown, those buildings that you saw that were all boarded up. Now, to show you that it's not all love and roses in Asheville, I mean, you all are counselors, you understand. This is one of my favorite citizens, Chris Peterson. These are some of his campaign ads for when he ran for council, and he's complaining about the city's investment in downtown. $26 million of investment for streetscape projects and downtown stuff. Okay, $26 million is a lot of money. I like this, downtown development for bureaucrats instead of water, sewer, streets for our citizens. And Chris is awesome. But let's do some math here. If you invest $26 million on a $100 million asset, and that asset grows to 500 million, is investing 26 and yielding $430 million of private capital, is that a good return on investment? Yeah. It's an awesome, it's an awesome return on investment. But the funny thing is, I could show Chris this chart, you're not gonna stop him. He's got a website now with fire and brimstone. This is our mayor here, Mayor Manheimer. I asked Esther, I like how she's getting hit with a lightning bolt. I said, is that a liquor drink? She goes, it should be. You know, there are just people that have their own biases and how they look at things. But there's data out there to explain it, to really what the city is. And in my state, Asheville is the only city in the entire state that's not allowed to annex land. That's our state legislator made that possible. So those acres that we have are all the acres that we have. It's a very confined farm. So we should be looking at the per acre productivity of this to understand what's going on. And why it matters to our council is that if you just look up the word incorporate in the Oxford American Dictionary, it says to constitute a company, a city, or other organization as a legal corporation. So by law, our city has a corporate charter. It's a corporation. It's just a really big real estate development corporation. So is my county, so is my state, so is your state, and so is our country. Joe Biden said this on the Stephen Colbert Show in 2016. The United States is the largest corporation in the world. To let you know, I'm such a nerd, I went and looked it up. There's the US Code at the bottom of the slide if you want to look it up. We are a federal corporation. So we're essentially just a big social corporation, if you will, where we're all shareholders in this commodity called the city of Bothell or the city of Asheville. My city at $14 billion of taxable value is six times the value of Ted Turner. So would you expect Ted Turner to just make all of his decisions on Facebook? Of course not. So what's the data that Ted Turner looks at to make an informed decision? And how do we bring that data forward? So we've been doing this for about 10 years now, all across the country, 35 different states. And as you mash up Canada, New Zealand, Australia, as you mash up the information, it's really simple. For every dollar, somebody is paying per acre out to the county and single family to the county per acre. Their brother or sister in the city in the same county is paying about five times that to the same county. Here's the Walmart, here's the mall. This is a two-story building, a three-story building, and a six-story building. So this could be Driggs Idaho, Durham, North Carolina, or downtown Dallas. As soon as you start stacking those stories, you see a phenomenal jump in value return. And I'm not showing skyscrapers here, this is everything under high-rise. So this is the productivity of how cities operate. Or conversely, the boxes and the big stuff just doesn't give you anything. And some people used to accuse me of just wanting to eviscerate Walmart or something. I'm like, no, you're missing the point. That's just a box as far as I'm concerned. In fact, I presented at the International Association of Tax Assessing Officers Conference. I don't know if you all hang out with your county assessor. If you could imagine being at a conference full of assessors, it makes a planning conference feel like Burning Man by comparison. It was probably the squarest conference I've ever done. Awesome people, but very nerdy. But this guy got up and presented at 8:00 in the morning, a spreadsheet after spreadsheet on how cheap Walmarts are. I'm in the back of the room drinking my coffee, thinking, this is awesome. I mean, this guy's got one presentation, 3,000 assessors, and he's getting his property tax bill lowered with one meeting. That was efficient. Now, it's real simple. If you build a cheap throwaway building, it's not worth anything. So don't blame the assessors. And so I went up to the microphone and I asked Mr. Terrell. I said, Mr. Terrell, what's the use for the life of one of your buildings? And he shot back 15, 20 years. We designed the building and depreciated as fast as possible. We don't care about the buildings, they're throwaway. So that's it. That's their commitment to your corporation, 15 years. That's the lifecycle of a cat. Sorry, I'm a dog person. No offense to the cat people. But this is just, this is their commitment and investment to your community. So just be aware of that. If it's good for you, awesome. But at least write it down. And I would argue that people don't see this because the information isn't presented to them in a way that they can absorb it. So we've kind of, to use another language, like if I could show you your brain and do an MRI of your brain and show you your creative thought processes in green versus your brainstem activity in blue. Like, we can actually take a picture inside your head now to show you that stuff. So if I can do that with your brain, can I do that with your place? So this is my county. Buncombe County is the name of the county. This is Mount Mitchell Federal Park, which is the tallest mountain east of the Mississippi, non-taxable. So just to be crude about it, I'm gonna turn all the non-taxable property, I don't care about it, it doesn't pay me taxes. I've got low value in green, I've got high value in purple. So we got low value up here, and then this is the Biltmore Estate. This is America's largest house right there, that big purple splotch, biggest house in the country. Worth $100 million. Very impressive. But really, it's not a fair way of talking about it because it's a 180,000-square-foot house sitting on 8,000 acres of land. So it's like having the biggest gas tank. Does anybody have a 180,000-square-foot house? No. So rather than seeing total value, let's do value per acre. The map just changed, and let me just show it to you in 3D. So by showing it in 3D, we could see what the differences are in the scale of potency writ large countywide. We're all paying six mils in county taxes. Where's the county getting all of its money? Out of that downtown. Can you guess where downtown Asheville is? Boom, this big purple mountain right there. Now, for my friends that live out here in Fairview, who think that their taxes are really high, their frame of reference may be their cousins that live further out here in Hickory Nut Gap or something like that. They have no idea what we're paying in downtown taxes. Conversely, look at our little cousin over here of Black Mountain. Black Mountain's 11,000 people. Look at its little downtown. The tallest building in its downtown is three stories tall. Look at that little mountain pop up right there. So this is how we can see the built environment and its relationship from an economic standpoint. So I would argue that you have to show the information in a way that people can absorb it. Don't just talk about it. So that's why we do these pictures. The other thing is our methodology of how we do analysis. We're gonna analyze all economics in an apples-to-apples metrics. That's why the per acre model is important because it makes things normative. So it's apples-to-apples. The second thing you want to do is start asking questions about, do we have standards or policies or practices that are actually causing some of these problems? So those are things that you can change locally. Also, being aware of what's going on at the state level as well. You want to consider all things geospatially. Something that has a cost to it is gonna cost more if you have more infrastructure and it's further out than something that's closer in. That needs to be analyzed. You want to visualize the economics as a choice architecture. Now, what I mean by choice architecture is that you have to be aware that you're making choices even though you're not conscious of it. And I'll show you an example of that later on. And then finally, always do things incrementally. Try little incremental changes of your code. And just don't hope for analysis paralysis. Don't get too bogged down. Experiment. Have fun with this stuff. And don't try to be, let the, try to be perfect about it. Now, when we first started doing this, the first reaction we got from people is like, well, that's Joe, that's North Carolina, we're different. And it's like, no, let me just show you some models, I'm just gonna blast through a few. This is Kansas City. Can you guess where downtown Kansas City is? This is Manchester, New Hampshire. Guess where downtown Manchester, New Hampshire is? This is Bozeman, Montana. Guess where downtown is? This is Brevard, North Carolina. This is a community of 7,000 people. Guess where downtown is? So you can see that potency, that purple mountain everywhere you go. We've also learned from Canada, Guelph, Ontario, they have a growth boundary around their community. They have incredibly sophisticated tax policies. We worked with them on their model in 2013. And what was fun is I went back a couple of years later, and they used this to understand why they needed to grow their downtown up. Back then, they were having an argument that people were like, oh, don't change downtown. We don't want downtown to change. It's like a curatorial museum, don't ever let it change, it's so precious. Yet, they needed to grow as a community. So they had to either grow their boundary or grow their downtown. Once they saw this model, they're like, oh yeah, we're definitely gonna grow downtown. Because you could see how low value the whole rest of the community is. So let's see what they did. That's from 2013. Here's 2016 and 2019. Look at the potency that they did just by adding buildings into their downtown. You can see how that purple mountain takes off. And I think they did like four buildings, basically. But it also, the rising tide raises all boats. It's gonna add more value to the whole downtown as a whole. Because you're just bringing more people downtown, you're gonna get more retail, more operating. So speaking of retail. You all, in Washington, retail is important to you all, more so than here in North Carolina. But in Minnesota, we love Minnesota because they're very transparent, they have great data. This is Hennepin County, home to Minneapolis. You can see where downtown Minneapolis is, by the way. But we were able to model their retail to a geographically specific detail. More detailed than we're allowed to do in Washington State, by the way. But this is the Mall of America, so that's America's biggest mall. Here's its retail productivity. So there it is. And I asked my analyst, I said, Josh, where's downtown? It's like, he's like, it's up over here. So this is downtown's retail tax production compared to Mall of America. Like, they were even blown away by this. And I'm like, why have you never even looked at the information this way? And it's just things we just get in habits. We just look at gross reports, we look at annual reports, we just, we see the information, but we don't really think it through. But by putting it on a map, we can see the relative position of downtown 10 times more potent in retail taxes than Mall of America. And Mall of America's only job is retail. Downtown has government buildings, offices, retail. It's all those tiny transactions that add up. So this is just geospatial analysis. And I know that this joke doesn't work for people over the age of, or under the age of 35, but just bear with me. It's spatial. We have to understand this stuff. And not all retail is the same. In Durango, Colorado, southwest Colorado, Colorado cities back then ran more off retail taxes. The counties took all the property taxes. So here's the property tax productivity model of Durango done by district. And you can see downtown's killing it. So the county should be tripping all over itself to help downtown grow. That's the ironic thing about the property tax system in Colorado. Here's the retail taxes. Now, here's what's interesting. South Durango is where the mall, the Home Depot, the Walmart is. And it's not nearly as productive as downtown. Here's total productivity, jobs, anything we can get our hands on, we're gonna model it so you can see potency. So you can make land use decisions to understand where to put your investment and where your golden goose is. Now, the interesting thing about Durango is they wanted an apples-to-apples comparison of their businesses, small mom-and-pop shops. So we had a couple of local businesses. These two guys are a riot. Peter has the bookstore on Main Street, and Tim has a coffee shop. Although Tim's a little weird, he sells like all this other stuff, like coffee equipment and things like that. But they shared their books. So here's the footprint difference of those two businesses versus Walmart. Here is the county property tax productivity of those two small businesses versus the Walmart. Here is the retail sales tax. So who would have thought that these two small businesses are, what is that, 15 times the property tax productivity and seven times the retail tax productivity? The data, I don't understand why have they not looked at this? Jobs per acre? They've got more jobs per acre than a Walmart as well. So if you ask yourself these economic questions, what's producing more wealth for your community? Now, let's ask the next question. Which one of those retail sector jobs, either the blue or the gray, who's paying their employees more per hour? The coffee shop and the bookstore or the Walmart? It's gonna probably be the coffee shop and the bookstore. Who's hiring the local website designer, the local ad executive, the local accountant, the local attorney? Is it gonna be the blue side or the gray side? So if we're not paying attention to this, we don't understand how this has a trickle-down effect. We're not watching where the money is being made, and we're just not even counting it. So we have to understand this stuff, we have to visualize it. And y'all aren't allowed to share this. This hasn't been made public yet, but we're doing a project over in Snohomish. So this is just a draft model, they haven't even seen it yet. So just, we're gonna go really quick through this. But here's Snohomish County. And when you kind of get in toward Everett, you can see like this is the Boeing facility and its production. It's almost like somebody dropped a bomb in there because you can see the low level of value around it. It's basically like cratered the value. There's a lot of sprawl heading toward Seattle. But if you just kind of hone in on a couple of communities, you can see that by design the difference in the productivity. I think Snohomish is actually a great example. It's a tiny little town, but look at this little downtown popping up. It's doing quite well, and it's got a little mountain to it, and it's got a little donut of suburb around it. When you go back. When you go back and look at what's going on between uh, the unincorporated area, it's, it's pretty flat. It's all just coming in as reds. And there's no, there's no alternative there. It's doing well because it's suburban, it's single family, but it's not gonna do well for long. That's all gonna rise and depreciate at the same scale because of its monolithic nature. You need to have, look at Everett, you need to have a, a, a top and you need to have a, a disc. You need to have those dualities. Um, we also measured their retail, uh, sales. So this is how we've been able to get it in your state is just by larger boundary. This is not that helpful when it comes to looking at different land use patterns. So that's one of the conversations that we're gonna be having with our client in Snohomish, but also with you all. Your state needs to give you better data so that you can make better decisions at a more micro level. So this is the taxable sales per acre. This is the tax, the sales tax revenue generated per acre. So if you look at Everett, there's a whole lot more sales going on than the actual revenue that makes it back to Everett. So we haven't drilled into it that deep yet, but I'm just showing you our preliminary results. But, but Snohomish does quite well in both of these, even though it's a tiny little place. So one of the fallacies that a lot of communities have is, Joe, we're growing, we're fine, we've got plenty of money. And I would say, not so fast, look into it. So Lancaster, California had us analyze theirs. They're out and over the mountain from Los Angeles, uh, very far away from Los Angeles, about, about an hour drive, hour and a half. Um, but what was crazy about their town, they're a hundred and sixty-six thousand people. They just have a couple of buildings downtown that are really productive. Their downtown needs to be bigger than what they have, but what really shocked us is they have nine hundred and fifty-three miles of roads. So you all have roads. Those roads have to be rebuilt every fifty years. So they have enough roads to go from Los Angeles to Portland. So they basically, could you imagine as choice architecture, if you could go back into a time capsule and go back in time, would you choose to build a road all the way to Portland? Yes or no? The answer is probably no, but why did they do that? And the other thing is, is how the, the, the roads get hidden to decision makers. So if you look at your books or talk to your finance officer, the standard of practice is that roads are assets. And whenever we talk to finance officers, the first question I ask them is like, all right, let's go through this for a second. If I have a, my computer that's right here, that's an asset to my business. If I had delivery vehicles, those are assets. If I had real estate, like a hot dog stand, that's an asset. I could sell the hot dog stand, the van, and the computer. Can you pick your roads up and can you sell them to Everett? No. So that's a liability. So rather than look at your ledger as, as an asset ledger, convert it to a liability, you'd see different math. So if you build a road, you have to understand that when that road comes, it's gonna come with an annual maintenance bill. That's gonna be, our estimate's about a hundred dollars a lane mile per year um, off that, the maintenance of that road. That's plowing, maintenance, whatever. Every ten years, you've got to do a rehab. That's gonna be a milling and resurfacing. That's gonna be another three hundred and ten thousand dollars, and that's gonna go through four cycles. Once you go through that fourth cycle, in the fiftieth year, that's when you go into a rehab. The rehab is a reconstruction of the road. That's gonna be a rebuild. That's gonna be much more expensive. So this is your nut of carrying in one useful life of your road. So this is what you have to bear in mind is what you really need to, to finance, because then you start the cycle all over again. So if you did this in Lancaster, it's about a million dollars a mile of, of budget you're looking at. So looking at all of their roads to see when they were built, um, it's a fairly new city. Did, not much of it existed before World War Two, but after World War Two, you can see all these lane miles that they built in nineteen fifty-three right here. That's a lot of lane miles. Well, guess what? That first rebuild haunts the, the parents' generation in nineteen eighty-three. And when the city council was hit with that huge capital bill, what did they do? They wanted to get more development, get more revenue. What, what they did is they, they annexed more land and they got more roads built. Will those roads come back to haunt them with a second rebuild and bring along with it the new stuff they just built? So we stopped them in two thousand and sixteen and just said, wait, let's just see what this cycle looks like. This is the build-rebuild cycle of their roads. So you can now look backward and say, alright, you probably didn't do a whole heck of a lot of math when you did that first jump. And a lot of communities didn't. If you look back at the literature of nineteen, the nineteen fifties, no one was thinking through the long-term consequences of suburbia. We were doing it for lots of reasons. Some of it was racial bias. Some of it was just financing of the federal government building highways, FHA mortgages. But then we went ahead and doubled down in this in the nineteen eighties because we convinced ourselves these were who we were as Americans. And we doubled down on the same problem. Now, without adding any more roads, our generation is dealing with this huge explosion in cost and consequences, and it's gonna get worse in the next cycle. So every American city across the country is going through this. So if you flush all of the money that Lancaster has for their roads, they run out halfway through. So they, they have about twenty-six million dollars to fund a fifty million dollar liability. And that's the reality of what the road system is. American cities are going through this now. And, and we have to look at this with clear eyes and be honest about what we did to ourselves. That's it. Be adults and realize, everybody's been kicking this can down the road for generations. And, and the price is coming due to us. Now, I understand this is pretty depressing stuff, but there are ways out of this. Um, we did a project in Eugene, Oregon. There's lots of ways to kind of unpack this stuff. This is Eugene's revenue model. They don't have any retail taxes, you know, in Oregon. This is floating the whole city in a lake and looking at the revenues that are above the water uh, like a boat, and then the cost is sunk below the water. So zooming in, if you live out here, uh, this is what you're paying in taxes. This is what you're costing in infrastructure. So back to that corporation model, if you, if you take your revenues net and net them against your expenses, you can see what's net positive or in the black and what's net negative and in the red. So here's the whole model in three D as a return on investment model. And you can see how well and productive their downtown is. Obviously, there's a hole right here. That's University of Oregon. And then here's like a little, you know, little town, village kind of thing of bars and restaurants and stuff like that. And you can see how potent that is. Um, if you lift this model up like you're looking for a salamander under a rock, you can see the spread of subsidy across this whole model. And that's the truth of the data of how they built their community. Uh, we had to break it down for them to look at it like the ingredients of the city through buildings. We, we call this the Brady Bunch slide. Uh, we have residential, single, uh, low density, medium density, high density, mixed use, low, medium, and high, commercial, low, medium, and high. And this is how their prices work out. So the average single-family detached house is averaging a loss of about fourteen hundred dollars an acre for that house type. And, and, and I also understand the politics of putting something like this out there. The, the, the vast majority of us, the overwhelming majority of us grew up in that product with a massive amount of subsidy to it. And that's the reality of what happened there. So just, let's all be honest about that and understand that we're now in this habit of wanting that housing type. But you can't do that subsidy with eighty percent of your land use. I can't eat pizza for eighty percent of my diet. I would like to, but I can't, my body can't handle that. So I have to balance my diet. The same thing should happen with your community. So think of it as a series of tree rings and you need to balance out those areas. So back to Eugene. They were actually considering expanding their growth boundary, but once they saw how they're wasting their real estate, they didn't do that. They basically realized they needed to rebuild. So they weren't, definitely gonna do stuff downtown, but if you look north of downtown, you can see this thing called Crescent Village up there. That was doing alright. So here's the thing. In your comprehensive plan or in your planning process, why don't you find a way to do four more of those? Just through tax increment, financing, through a bond, many different ways, zoning, uh, changes. You can do lots of things to stimulate development and, and grow it up and focus on those areas so you can afford to carry more of those losses into the future. It's just about balancing your books. Secondly is interrogate your different systems. Not so sexy to talk about sewerage, but here's a sewer map. So here's all the different basin districts around the community. So each of those different colors is its own standalone trunk system. And we asked the engineering team, we're just like, okay, so these people here, when they flush their toilet, do they pay the same rate per gallon as these people here? And the engineer's like, yeah, everybody pays the same per gallon. But you can see right on the map, these people have eight different lift stations. And I asked the engineer, I said, how expensive are those lift stations? And I knew what the price was. They're a million dollars a pop. So that's eight million dollars of extra infrastructure and it costs fifty thousand dollars per lift station to maintain them on an annual basis. So I said, is, is everybody aware that they have twenty million dollars more infrastructure in that neighborhood than this neighborhood? Is that fair that the rest of the community picks up their cost? Doesn't seem fair to me. Secondly, from an environmental perspective, why do you need to have a lift station to lift sewerage uphill? Well, it's because they built this whole area in a wetland. They should have never done that in the first place. Don't destroy the, the earth. It's like, it's, we only have one of those. So don't incentivize or subsidize development in a pattern in an area that you shouldn't be in in the first place. And it's that simple. And they just never thought of it that way. Uh, secondly was their stormwater system. If you look at their roads and take all their roads and squeeze it together, this is the scale of all their roads. That is literally the scale of all the roads over the size of the city. That's a tremendous amount of area that's not paying any stormwater fees. So the people that choose to live further out aren't paying for all of that cost of all that road. And they have a lot of roads. They have enough roads to go from Eugene to San Francisco. So one of the ways that we try to get them to see this is here's their land area. Let's take the land area and squeeze it into a box. That's the land area is the box, same city size. Here's their different impervious surfaces, and here's the numbers on that. So basically, they have about the same amount of area in roads and in parking. When you look at the value of the buildings, that's the taxable value of all buildings across the city. Here's the taxable value of parking. Parking gives you no money, period. When you look at the cost of the roads, that's tremendously, tremendously expensive. So here's the question to ask yourselves as a policymaker. Who decided to give parking such a huge discount? Who uses the roads? That would be called cars. Who uses parking? That would be called cars. If the use is costing you this, shouldn't the cost of the cars be made out of the value of the parking? Shouldn't it pay its fair share to cover the cost of the roads? So the answer is no. So what ends up happening is you raid your building fund to pay for the cost of the roads. Is that the best choice for you? Now, now, the, the backyards, buffers, berms, all that stuff, you get nothing out of that, even though it's the majority of your, of your land use. We just don't tax that stuff. So we, we talked to the, the Public Works Director and threw a little thought experiment. We said, okay, we, we're just gonna go ahead and rebuild your stormwater system. Would you, would it be fair to say it's about four hundred and forty million dollars? And he said, yes, that's about what it would cost. It's like, okay. So let's say we had the same amount of buildings, but we had more two-story buildings than one-story buildings. So we could take the buildings and just same amount of area, but just less footprint. If we did that, we can get the buildings closer together. If we got the buildings closer together, we'd have less parking, less roads. So let's say we cut it all by half. If we cut all of that stormwater system by half, or, or impervious surface, would it cut the stormwater system in half? And he said, yes. I said, so I've just made you two hundred and twenty-two million dollars. Or if we could go back into, into a time machine, would you choose to spend two hundred and twenty-two million dollars on spreading yourselves out even further? Or would you use that two hundred and twenty-two million dollars to spend, I don't know, every single child in your town to Stanford for free education or something? Like, what would you choose to do? Buy pink flamingos for everybody? I don't know. It's just like, this should be a choice that you make consciously, but we don't. Um, so back to their land. Um, this is their non-taxable land, and this is their taxable and their vacant land. When they saw this, they thought they didn't have a whole lot of land. But if you just change the question and ask, how much of your land is the dirt worth more than the building on top of it? That was another sixteen percent. So rather than just looking at vacant land as your only opportunity, maybe you should be looking at other economic questions. And so this is what we did in Eugene, Oregon. Um, and the other thing was, the vacant land is also expensive. In many cases, it's subsidized, so it's not paying its fair share in taxes. And these are just a couple of samples. So we need to be aware that there's a suburban bias baked into our tax system in how things operate um, and, and what the numbers are showing. So I'll give you one last example from Eugene. These are two neighborhoods pretty close to downtown. And when the planner saw this, he's like, well, this one's gonna be more expensive because it's denser, the one on the right than the left. And I said, well, hold on, Will, just let's go through this. So the pipes are only one inch wider here versus here. But the neighborhood on the right has double the amount of, of, amount of, um, as people using the system on it, uh, units than the one on the left on half the length of pipe. So if you have double the units on half the length, that means that the feet of pipe per capita on the, on the right is four times less than the one on the right, at the left. So I said to the planner, I said, Will, look, digging the ditch one inch wider is not as expensive as digging it four times longer. That's where the expense is. Now, as we were showing this to the engineer, I said, look, you also get more taxes out of the thing down the right. The engineer was really funny. He goes, well, I don't care about taxes. I'm like, really? You don't? He's like, no, no, we don't worry about taxes because we charge an enterprise fee. It's a, it's a utility system. That's how we pay for water. We don't care about taxes. And I turned to the planner and I said, hey, Will, how do you get paid? And Will goes, property taxes. And I'm like, I guess you don't care about, Will. You don't care about the city attorney, you don't care about the Parks Department. And the engineer was like, whoa, 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 I didn't mean that. I'm like, I just need to get you to see how this is all connected. I'm just pulling your leg. But secondly, as an engineer, it costs more for the system on the left than the one on the right. Shouldn't you be explaining this to people? So we just don't because we get into habits. Um, I think this is my last example, which is Indianapolis. Um, we did a bus rapid transit system in Indianapolis. So there's two bus rapid transit lines. There's the red line and the blue line. Um, and this is the, the one that we focused on, which is the blue line. Going through their land use analysis and seeing countywide, this is Marion County. These are all their buildings, their parking. Um, and this is kind of how they use their land with impervious surface. Where to turn it into a square, this is, this is what it looks like. So this is how they use their land. And then when you look at their revenues, um, their roads dwarf their parking. Uh, they have a really big road problem there. They just built way too much. Um, so what's going on is they're raiding their building fund to cover that big, big loss in roads right there. So that's countywide. We did the same thing, um, for looking at the transit corridor or a pedestrian walk shed around each transit stop. Dropping the downtown out of it. Here's their relationship. Now, you probably don't remember countywide, but we brought it back to show them. This is what blew my mind. They actually have more land inside the bus corridor dedicated to parking in the middle of their city than they do countywide as a ratio of, of land use. That is not good. So to make it real for them, this is the Indianapolis five hundred. They have that much land and parking, about three times the Indianapolis five hundred inside their bus corridor dedicated to car storage. Uh, now financially, this is the way that it works out for them. This is Marion, of Marion County. Countywide, there's about twelve hundred acres of, um, uh, twelve hundred square feet of buildings dedicated to each citizen, about eight hundred square feet of parking and about nine hundred square feet of roads. Uh, when you look at the value, this is how the valuation works out. The average value per square foot of a building is about fifty bucks. Parking seventy-five cents. The road's gonna cost you twenty-two dollars a square foot in front of the building and twenty-two dollars a square foot in front of the parking. Road doesn't change. But your price on the other side of the road does. So your revenue, from a revenue standpoint, you're getting seventy-one times less taxes out of that parking than the building. So just to run the experiment, we're like, well, if we take half the taxes and put it into a savings account, how long would each of those land uses take to pay off the roads? So it's forty-two years for the building. It's three thousand years for the parking. So when you don't have money, it's because every surface parking lot you drive by, realize how big this subsidy is. Just be aware of this. The other thing is, these are all the people with, without, with no cars per household in Indianapolis, Indiana. This isn't Seattle or San Francisco. This is middle America. These are the households with one car per household, two cars, and three cars. So when you look at the data, countywide, fifty percent of the households have one car or less. Inside the bus corridor, you're looking at sixty percent. So not everybody has a car. Why do you have two parking spaces per residential unit as a mandatory parking requirement in your zoning code? You're just shooting yourself in the foot. So this is just getting people to realize that and understand that, that there's costs and consequences. By, by the way, they've built enough road in Indianapolis to build a road all the way to Anchorage. This is insane, the amount of asphalt that we've put onto this planet. They run out of money somewhere in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. They are never gonna be able to rebuild these roads. This is a paradigm in a system in America that we've built over a hundred years in this crazy zombie-like stance without ever thinking through the long-term consequences. So that stuff on the left, there is a market that's making it happen, but it's hugely subsidized by the way that our tax system operates. And that's the reason why you don't have money for a Greenway, an art teacher, a dancing traffic cop, is that it is being consumed by incentives that are baked into the system. And I'll give you one last example. This is one of my favorites. This is taking the, um, the, the buildings off the earth and just looking at the dirt value per acre. This is Cheyenne, Wyoming. And I was presenting this at like eight in the morning. And I said, hey, you expect the, the neighborhood up here. See, everybody's blue up here in the upper left. When I was showing this to the community down at the commercial strip, I was like, hey, what's When I was showing this to the community down at the commercial strip, I was like, hey, what's going on here? Where this parcel, the dirt is fifty thousand or sorry, fifteen thousand dollars an acre. And when you cross the street in the same zoning category, it doubles in value. And the tax assessor raised her hand and she just yelled out at me. She goes, you don't understand. And I said, what am I missing? She goes, well, these people have a bigger property. The bigger property, the lower the land value. Let that wash over you for a second. I'm like, really? If I get more of your land, you give me a discount? She goes, well, that's the way that the system works. And I said, okay, I've got three miles of roads around this property. She goes, we don't count roads as part of the valuation. And she goes, well, and I said, so the money that you put in the ground, you don't ever want it back? She goes, that's not part of the way we do assessment. So I went to the assessors conference because their magazine is called Fair and Equitable. And I asked them, how is this fair and how is it equitable? To their credit, they just said to me, they're like, it's not. I'm like, where did this standard come from? Did Moses deliver this to you? They're like, we don't know. By the way, they thought this was a funny joke. But this is gonna, the way that you're steering your investment, this is what's going on with with your tax dollars, whether you like it or not. And I know that I'm at time, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go ahead and and jump to the end here. We call this a form of geoaccounting, right? So it's just, we're putting numbers down on a map so you can see it. And like your accountant, we're not gonna make, we're not here to make judgment calls. Like your accountant doesn't care if you buy a boat, right? But your accountant cares if you can afford a boat. So if you if you can, if you have the what the the revenue to afford that kind of a community, go go for it. But don't go spending money that you don't have and hope that it'll work out. But people need to be able to see it. So we're gonna put this on a map so you can see it. We're gonna make the 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 images speak to everyone. You don't have to have a special training to see it. But but also, we need to figure out and interrogate what's leaking. Is it tax policy that's driving it? Is it is it just biases? Is it just standards of practice that just really are just habits at this point? Um, is it biased thinking? What's going on with the leaking in your city and you need to be able to see where those holes are? And and finally, I'd like to close with a good friend of mine, Chuck Maroon, uh, and in Strong Towns. I don't know. I know that some of you might be readers of Strong Towns. We're big fans of Strong Towns. But he talks about all of this in his book and we do a lot of work that demonstrates it. Uh, so with that, I'll I'll stop it. It's some forty-three minutes in. And I want to thank you for letting me do some math and take some questions.
Anyone have questions? Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I'm gonna go fast because we we are going to get you back, right? Please yes. We're gonna, this conversation is going to carry over to another time, right?
Okay.
So I need I need to fill the floor to to the rest of council. Uh, yes, and I I have Strong Town sitting on my shelf. Um, I wanted to ask a quick question then. I know we've got other council members who are chomping at the bit with their insights and thoughts. So uh, you made a comment uh, when you were talking about retail info in Minneapolis. And you said, uh, it's more to, you had more detail than were allowed in Washington. What what are we not allowing in Washington to give you? What details are we not giving you?
Um, basically, in in Minne- in in um there there are certain confidentiality standards that for some reason they apply in retail taxes and they differ in the states. Oftentimes, what we find is no one's asked. They usually just get them at a city level and they're just satisfied at that level. No one's analyzed them for different boundaries or zones inside the community. So in defense of the revenue officers, no one's ever asked them for that at that level of detail. Um, in in the case of Minnesota, they're just like, oh, you wanna see the whole mall? Uh, and they'll just give us everything that's going on in the mall. Now, we have to sign a confidentiality agreement that we can't show what Lord and Taylor's does versus Macy's. But from from our perspective, we don't care. We just wanna show the whole mall. And and that meets their confidentiality standards. Usually when we share what we get in um other states, that usually opens the the revenue office to have the conversation. But because our client right now in in Snohomish County is the county, um, it's coming at such a high level. I think that if we had a relationship with one of the cities, we could, we could probably poke at it more. Um, but we just don't have that experience. In 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 um Des Moines, we actually had a software script that we would drop onto a parcel and maybe start with a Walmart. And it would work its way out until it collected enough land uses that it would hide and mask the Walmart. Um, again, for confidentiality pers- perspectives.
Okay, so now when you said Des Moines, do you mean Des Moines, Washington or?
Oh, sorry, Iowa, Iowa.
Okay. Um, okay, so the confidentiality piece I get. Uh, the rest of the information is basically because it hasn't been asked? It's not because we have a law that we need to go in and fix?
Uh, best that I've, best that I've been able to figure out so far. But I can get you a better, I can get you a better answer by the next time we talk.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I'm gonna yield the floor to everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you. Um, I'm also interested in if there is a law getting in the way of information. I feel that, I feel like we've talked to our finance director and we are not allowed to to get information on individual um retail taxes collected. So there may actually in fact be a law. So I would, I'd be interested whoever can provide that information. Cause it sounds like that's really needed. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you so much for coming. Um, this is literally paradigm shifting and I'm sure you've heard that before. But I don't know a a city in this state that doesn't have a structural deficit. Um, and now it has become very apparent, um, if it wasn't before, why? Um, we actually in in the city of Bothell had to do a streets and sidewalks levy to try to get at, make a small dent in our maintenance and preservation um of streets. And it's a ten-year levy. It's not gonna last forever and we're, we've only made a dent in arterials. And so I I think probably every council member here is well aware of that. Um, that liability that we all carry. Um, I wondered if um so I I assume you're also a consultant or you can point us to consultants um to, I'm assuming as part of of what you do, for for instance, the city of Snohomish, is that you make land use recommendations in terms of code changes and uh upzoning and that sort of thing. Is that, is that kind of where? I, it looks like you're giving us your initial kind of how you approach the problem, but then what's that, what would be the next step after assessment of the current um circumstances?
It it depends what we find. Um, sometimes we'll work in partnership with um with with planning consultants that focus more on that. It tend to think of us as like a radiologist. We're gonna do a series of CAT scans and MRIs and just kind of show you what's happening. And you're gonna see where those different tissue points are. Um, but you might need a knee surgeon instead of a um a back specialist. We don't know. Um, and so that's kind of our our general recommendation is see what the data reveals. Um, and allow yourself to see where those issues are. So in the case of in the case of Eugene, they had the staff talent that they could go through and do a lot of those corrections with their staff. Um, they didn't necessarily need additional consulting. Um, in the case of of Lancaster, um, they handled a lot of their work with um actually their stormwater fees. So it's 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 hard to give you a like a one-size-fits-all answer in this. We're, we're gonna try to show the information and figure out what's broken. And there will be things like in the case of, the case of that Indianapolis project, we knew there was a zoning problem. And we did everything we could to explain to them that it was their parking requirements. You know, so that opened the door for them to have their planning consultant just change the zoning code. And that was a lot faster because the community understood the problem. You know, in defense of citizens, they don't have the time to go through this stuff, you know, they don't. And then they show up at a council meeting and it's a whole bunch of gibberish. They're like, what's going on? They don't know the language. They don't know the lingo. Um, they're not gonna read a budget. Um, but they can't see where the problem is. So we're gonna try to find a way to make that visual for people as a form of mass communication. So in defense of the citizen, and I I used to be a working government, I used to speak like zoning code gibberish when I was a professional and I thought I was communicating and I wasn't. I was speaking my trade language. And that's just not fair for citizens.
I think we all make that mistake, um, because we're kind of in our own worlds. Um, yeah, I think um this is perfect timing because um, every eight years in Washington, the comprehensive plan updates begin. And the first round begins, I think thirty-nine cities are going through it, um, beginning in twenty twenty-three. And so um, these types of land use changes, it's it's critical, I I believe, to make um, these decisions, but you know, as part of our comp plan update. And we have, um, we have a two BRT lines coming. Um, and so it it's just the perfect time to be able to address um kind of competing factors and um, and deal with our structural deficit. So I, I thank you again. Um, you may have been really bad at presenting at one time, but I will tell you, you were very engaging and the visuals are super, super helpful. I think um, I think it would be great for some of our um, our residences to see. And I hopefully maybe we can just even clip um your presentation from today and just put it up so that people can can watch it because it's it's very, very clear and very enlightening. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Joe, thank you for coming out and talking to us and uh doing so at a very late hour. Um, I appreciate you staying up to come um talk to us. Um, Councilmember Doer kind of got at this question a little bit, but I guess what I was looking for is simply, you know, should we hire you to do this land value analysis? Like what kind of actionable information are we going to walk away with?
Um, with the land value analysis, you're gonna, you're gonna see where your most potent uh properties are. Um, our recommendation at that point will be, how do you make more of that happen? What's in the way of of making that happen? And how do we make those changes? If it's going to be going through the comp plan process, um, you know, what can you do now instead of waiting until twenty twenty-three? Um, but you'll at least have this ready for when that process happens. Um, we could, we could interrogate different pieces. I don't know what you're wrestling with from either a stormwater perspective, uh wastewater or water issues. We could do geospatial um auditing of that as part of the process. Um, but helping you focus in on where to spend your energies and time, but also how to communicate that back to citizens. One of the great things about Zoom and this whole experience is that is that we can record this now. And then you have it twenty-four seven. You could, you know, is 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 uh as Councilmember Doer said, you can, you can record this and then it's it's community education at that point. Um, you know, the the vast majority of citizenry trusts you all to make good decisions and they're not showing up. Um, the the weird things about public processes is you tend to get the really vocal minority or the the super, the cheerleaders. Uh, but there is not a whole lot of people in the middle because people are busy. They just, you know, have faith in the system. Uh, but this can reach them at home. Um, so that's one of the things we've been recommending to people is let's come up with a series of like mini TED Talks about how your city operates financially. As little fifteen-minute little bits. And those are becoming more popular rather than a a report that's like a PDF that no one reads. We can make these little YouTube videos for you um that explain it. So that's one of the recommendations that we've been doing because it's, it's consumable. Um, and our work is very visual, as you can see.
Yeah, absolutely. So fundamentally, you're gonna essentially like, you know, we we talk about a structural deficit here in Bothell all the time, especially around budget time, which are getting less and less fun from what I hear. Um, you you're gonna essentially interrogate the structure and kind of figure out where those deficits are coming from. And then give us like ways that we can go about fixing that structure over the long term, correct?
Uh, correct, yeah.
Okay, awesome. Um, I was really interested in, uh, I wasn't expecting to see what you did with Indianapolis around the BRT lines. Um, we have a couple of BRT lines that are coming on board in uh five to ten years, call it. It's a, it's a process we're working through right now. Um, and I had never even thought about the idea of using those BRT lines as a way to help make us more financially sound. Um, and like I'm, I'm seeing that for really for the first time is just a huge opportunity for Bothell to help kind of leverage that investment that we're getting from the greater community um into money that can come straight here. So um, thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation. Um, that's all I've got.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for your presentation. Uh, I I too thought the the graphics were amazing. Different ways of presenting that information uh and looking at it from different points of view and and pulling on those strings. Uh, I I'm a engineer in the transportation public arena and so, so some of those definitely uh hit home, especially with a lot of the utilities and uh just the road replacements. So uh, I I think there's definitely some future conversations that would be interesting with looking at this data in Bothell and and what can be gleaned from it uh with the analysis that's done. So thank you for uh the presentation on what's possible and what's what's going on elsewhere.
Well, thank you. I thank you all for your time and allowing me to do this presentation. I do appreciate it. And uh, we'll talk to you later. Take care. Have a great night.
All right, so that will take us on to our next item. Uh, we have an update on the vehicle storage contract. And I believe we have the chief and Chief Superlick and Captain Johnson coming on board here.
All right. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council members. At our last council meeting prior to going on our summer break, we, the PD, requested your approval to enter into a contract for vehicle storage. The particular request was a little outside the norm in that we asked your permission to enter into a contract for vehicle storage without knowing the exact cost. Uh, the reason for that was that uh at the particular time, we were trying to lock in a particular property in the one prior to that we actually lost uh due to lag. So we did not want to lose another one because every time we were trying to enter a contract, it was costing us more money. So uh, though this was outside the norm, uh, you voted to approve our request. Uh, this vote of trust was not lost on us. And we moved quickly to secure a location and work with legal to negotiate a contract that was reasonable and met the needs of the department. Uh, this was especially important because our current location is slated for demolition by Washtod. The location of the building is just outside of Bothell, located in Oneville. Uh, the building will fit our current and future needs as it has room for expansion should additional storage be needed. The cost of the facility, uh, because that was the, I think, the point that everybody wanted to know, is gonna be seven thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty cents plus triple N's for the first twelve months. Seven thousand nine hundred and one and fifty-six cents plus triple N's for thirteen through twenty-four. Eight thousand two hundred and fifty-seven thirteen plus triple N's for twenty-five through thirty-six. Eighty-six twenty-eight point seventy plus triple N's for months thirty-seven through forty-eight. And at nine thousand sixteen dollars and ninety-nine cents plus triple N's at the forty-nine to sixteen month mark because we're in a five-year lease. To help keep these costs in perspective, the best deal we were able to locate in the city of Bothell was twelve thousand dollars a month. Um, so um, I know this seems like a lot of money. I I don't know, it may not shock anybody else, but it shocked me. Um, that this was actually a good deal. I thought I'd never say that with that kind of uh pricing. But our other options were Marysville, Arlington, uh Granite Falls and things like that were, that were just not uh user-friendly for the uh, the need that we had. And this keeps the location close to the city and it keeps our costs down in moving those vehicles around. Uh, Captain Johnson, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, Chief, thanks. Uh, just as the person kind of in charge of our evidence and the storage of the vehicles, I just really wanna take a minute to thank everybody for your support. Uh, as the chief mentioned, this was a bit unconventional. It's nothing that we've ever had to do before, but uh our building is coming down and we do have vehicles up there that were involved in homicides and fatality collisions and uh serious sexual assaults uh that we have to put somewhere. Uh, so we really, really do appreciate uh you guys having the faith in us to let us move forward with this project. And it does solve some very long-term uh storage needs that that we have. Uh, so we're really excited moving forward with this and we're hoping the tenant improvements are gonna start later. are going to start later this week. We're hoping we're going to get the keys pretty soon. We have some security issues to address out there with alarms and stuff, but we think we could get cars moving hopefully sometime in October. So again, thank you so much for having the faith in us. We really appreciate it. It does make our job a lot easier and we, we just, I want to take a minute too to thank the whole council for the support you've shown us for the last years we, we've embarked on this and several other projects. You guys have been great, so thank you.
Yes, I couldn't agree more.
Any questions or comments from council?
Well, I'll just say that I think the council had great reason to place our trust in you just from what we've seen from the police department all these years. So I think it was an easy decision to make this kind of unusual choice at this time, but looks like it paid off and we, we got a good location, fairly close and for a better rate than what we could find within Bothell.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I know we, August is a little bit of a quieter month, but does anyone have a council committee report they'd like to make? Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I went to the Washdod 405167 Executive Advisory Group meeting over the last month and we have a letter that we would like the city to sign and to sign on for. And it essentially involves asking the legislature to use Garvey bonds to help fund the project that supports the BRT in between 522 and 527. Gordon Thomas Honeywell has recommended that we ask that and do that ask. And essentially, we're trying to figure out how we can get BRT online sooner.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no other reports. Oh, Councilmember Doer.
Do we need to, I guess a question of staff, do we need to vote as a council to sign on to that letter? Because I think there's a timeline for it.
Uh, yes.
So just point of clarification, Paul, it's part of their legislative agenda and their priorities. So.
Okay.
I would think that.
It will take care of itself.
Or the mayor, yeah, the mayor or Councilmember Thompson, depending on who you would want to sign it, should be able to with that prior approval.
Understood.
Thanks for the clarification.
All right, on to visitor comments. Laura, do we?
Thank you, Mayor Olson. Yeah, we received one written comment this afternoon and it was from Andrew Nelson. And it is asking that City Hall be open to the public during all natural disasters, including the heat wave. And this was in reference to the recent heat wave that we experienced. And that is the only comment I've received and I do not see any members of the public in the attending room. So that is all we have. And you all received a copy of that, that written comment and it will be made part of the record.
Thank you. Onto our consent agenda. Nothing was pulled. Councilmember Doer.
I'd like to move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to approve the consent agenda as presented with a second by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none. City Clerk? You're on mute. Welcome back.
Yeah. Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Guys, stop laughing, yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Pass is seven zero.
Great, thank you. All right. So let's move on to the next item. We have a AB 21-125. So it's a public hearing and consideration of ending the interim ordinance, temporarily suspending the development application and permit timeline. So I will now open the public hearing and I will turn it over to our Community Development Director, Michael Cotterman.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Welcome back from summer break. Very nice to see all of you again. So tonight's public hearing is about one of the interim ordinances that the council passed in response to the pandemic. So this was about a year and a half ago. It was actually one of the first actions that the council took related to trying to address some concerns that came up during the pandemic about development activity. And at that time, the interim ordinance had the effect of suspending any expiration of permits or permit applications during the, the time that that ordinance is in effect. The council has extended that ordinance or renewed it, if you prefer, twice so that we're now eighteen months into this, I think much longer than any of us would have anticipated. It has been helpful and it, we believe that things are moving along now pretty smoothly in terms of development activity. We're seeing close to record development activity in terms of the permit applications and the permits issued that we've been handling over the, the course of the last several months. And we don't see that abating anytime soon. So to, to us, that's an indication that things are working and we may no longer need the interim ordinance that suspends those timelines. Keeping those in place also builds up potentially a backlog because what it does is it, it means that all of these applications that might have been completed otherwise are just going to keep going. So then we're, we're building up this backlog of, of, of projects and applications that may or may not come to some conclusion. In the normal course of events, if a project isn't going to be concluded, then it expires and it, and it goes off of the books and it's no longer part of the project review process. They can always reapply or they can get a renewal or an extension, but at least we have a tracking system and we, we have a way of, of making sure that we're not losing any of those. Because we've been doing this now for eighteen months, we've got quite a buildup, a backlog. We don't know really how many might be affected by this at this point, but we know that there are dozens and dozens out there that may have been taking advantage of this. And most of them have been moving along. We expect that there will be some that will have some concerns or some issues. They will still be able to apply for a renewal or an extension. We want to do this gradually. We don't want to just end when this current interim ordinance will end on the fifteenth of September. We want to give people time. We want to make sure that we can get as much notification out there as possible so that people are aware that their permits or their applications may be expiring unless they take some action. So the staff recommendation is that we would continue the interim ordinance with the council's action per the ordinance that's in your packet. That would continue this current suspension and expiration. It said that this current suspension of the termination of those applications and permits through the end of this year, December 31st of this year. They would still be able to apply for a renewal or extension if they're eligible for that under our current code requirements. We're creating an incentive for them to do that before December 31st. Because if we get a bunch of those applications in the last two weeks of December, there's no way we're going to be able to process them all in time. So what we're doing is we're recommending that we set a date of November 30th and the cost then of that renewal or extension would be $168, just a flat fee. That's an incentive for them to get those applications in and then we'll, we can, pretty, we're pretty sure that we can then process all of those before the end of the year. So no, there would be no interruption in their projects. If they apply after that, and they can, we're not saying they wouldn't be able to, they would pay whatever the normal fee would be and we would process it as quickly as we can, but we, we couldn't guarantee that we'd get it done by the end of the year, in which case their project could be suspended for a period of time until that renewal or extension is approved. So that's what we've built into this. We're going to be doing some extensive notification through every means that we can come up with to try to get the word out to, to all the applicants that might be affected by it. This would only apply to those projects that would have expired during that period through December 31st. So if someone has applied, say in July of this year, their expiration date would continue beyond that date to whatever it would, it would normally be. So this is really just to clear out the ones that have been prolonged through this particular interim ordinance. And with that rather rambling explanation, I'll, I'll stop there and see if there are any, any questions.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Well, I have a rambling question because clearly I've never had to apply for a building permit, so I don't understand the whole dynamics of it. I, I get the sense from you that we're talking about two months out, notices are going and the deadline is three months and some change out. Is that right?
Right. The, the expiration will actually occur on December 31st.
Okay.
And if the council approves this tonight, we'll start notifying applicants that that will be happening. And they have until November 30th to apply at the reduced rate for, for a renewal.
Okay, perfect. And then, so I, I am assuming and trusting that you, you on the staff end are feeling pretty comfortable of managing, managing what, what will happen when we do this. And we, we tell people that, you know, December 31st is the cutoff date.
Yes, and that's, that's why we want to do this gradually. We don't want to just cut it off on September 15th, you know, in, in another week without people being aware that it's going to happen. So we want to make sure they have plenty of notice that they can do whatever they need to do, whether it's finishing the project, submitting the information that they need to, to continue their application, apply for a renewal, or decide that the project just isn't going to be done on time and they're, you know, going to terminate the project.
Okay. Okay, well, I have every confidence in you. So if, if you think it's doable, I, I have no other questions. It's good to have a little piece wrapped up.
Yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
Just want to thank you for the presentation. Thank you for setting this in motion when it was needed during the early days of the pandemic. I think it was a great public service to do so and I'd like to move the recommended action.
Hold on one moment. We, City Clerk, did we have any public comments?
We did not.
All right. Great. Councilmember Doer? If you would like to restate your motion.
I'd like to move the recommended action.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to approve the proposed ordinance extending the interim official control originally adopted by ordinance number 2312 and subsequently extend by ordinance number 2326 and ordinance number 2351 through December 31st, 2021, and temporarily setting a uniform fee for the renewal or extension of affected applications through November 30th, 2021, with a second by Deputy Mayor Zorn. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Pass is seven zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's take a break and let's re-adjourn at 7:30.
Record.
Council, just for your reference for council and those listening at home, I'm going to try to be better about this. I am referencing packet page number two thirty-five and after in the online council packet. We have two proposals before you this evening from Gordon Thomas Honeywell. One is is continued advocacy at the state level that we have been enjoying with Shelley Helder the past few years. And that is included in your twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. And the other is for federal advocacy, and that would be a new program for us. And it would be, it is not currently in the budget, so it would have to be added as part of the upcoming biennial budget amendment. So Gordon Thomas Honeywell has been tremendously successful for the city of Bothell advocating for us at the state level. Over the past few years, we have received funding for our pedestrian bridge at Bothell Landing, as well as the cleanup downtown and the North Creek Trail. So Shelley's been very, very helpful for us. And the proposal for federal advocacy, staff is recommending pursuing that now that the federal earmark process is back. And there is a lot of leadership in Washington DC that can help us gain some additional federal funding for some of our council priorities in this area, so. So tonight we are joined by Dale Lern and Travis Lumpkin on the federal side, as well as the familiar face of Shelley Helder from Gordon Thomas Honeywell. The four of us are here to answer council questions and have you discuss the potential of extending Shelley's work, as well as potentially adding the federal work.
Thanks, Aaron. I will just kick off the conversation here with you all. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you all. I am excited to be with you, even though it's virtual. And as Aaron mentioned, our firm contracts with the city to provide government affairs services at the state level. And we've been working together since twenty eighteen. And as Aaron mentioned, we've already accomplished a lot of our goals. But we are, we still have more work to do. Couple of the successes that we've accomplished to date is we've secured one and a half million dollars towards the downtown cleanup project, four hundred thousand dollars for the Canyon Park Subarea Plan, over a million for the bridge at Bothell Landing, and then most recently, just this year, six hundred and eighteen thousand for the North Creek Trail Phase Three construction. And I just, I list all of those accomplishments to remind you that your decision as a council to invest in government affairs services is resulting in a direct return to the Bothell community and at an exponential rate. And in that success, while, you know, it would be really easy to to take credit for that, it has been in large part due to the city's legislative delegation. They care deeply about Bothell issues, and they have represented the city of Bothell very well in Olympia. And but as I said, we do have more work to do, and over the last several months, we've been busy. Since a lot of our success that occurs during session is correlated to our work during interim months. And so our, the current contract for state services ends with, ends on December thirty first of this year. And we're eager to continue working with you all and currently working with city staff to update the city's state legislative agenda in light of what we accomplished in twenty twenty-one. And then I'll be back in front of you all next month to provide context for what we expect in the twenty twenty-two session and to present a draft agenda for review and discussion. So tonight, really, the primary purpose is to provide you all with information about opportunities for government government affairs services at the federal level. And GTH is proud to have a federal team that's rooted here in Washington, that has an extensive network of connections in DC and a really strong history of partnering with local governments to help them achieve their priorities. So I'm excited to introduce you to my colleagues Dale Lern and Travis Lumpkin from our firm's federal team. Dale is the managing partner of the federal team, and he lives in DC, even though he and Travis are in the same room right now. Dale's back in Washington today. Travis is a vice president. He lives here in Washington, and together, they have nearly four decades of congressional experience. So I am going to turn it over to them to share a little bit more about themselves and the services that they that they provide. And then we want to leave ample time for questions and discussion. But I I just want to note that in many ways, when the city was considering whether or not to contract with us for state services, there was a lot that you didn't know that you didn't know. And I'd argue that the city's in a similar position at the federal level. And so Dale and Travis are experts and can guide and advise the city to make sure that we don't miss opportunities that would allow you all to advance your goals and priorities, and really the community's goals and priorities. So I am going to stop there and turn the floor over to Travis and Dale.
Well, thank you, Shelley, very much. Normally Travis and I don't sit this close to each other, but we were having some feedback problems when both of our laptops opened. We're in a very closed space, so we appreciate your understanding. Thank you for those generous remarks. Thank you to the mayor and the the city council in Bothell, and we appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about what federal services could be for the city. Again, we've we've had a federal presence for many years. I think it started in nineteen ninety-nine with with our president, Tim Schobert, coming to DC. And then I came off the Hill from Senator Murray's office in two thousand and five to head our federal shop. We have several principles, Travis and I being the primary, but we have others, and we offer sort of a full service when it comes to the federal government. You can see from our bios, we have a long history working in the government, in the in the in the Congress, as well as, you know, for myself and for Travis, being consultants, working with a variety of different public and private entities, primarily from Pacific Northwest, but some from other places. As Shelley mentioned, the federal government does a lot of things very well and some things not so well, but they act in a little bit long-term basis on a lot of issues. But one thing they've done this year that that they brought back was the earmark process. It had been taking a hiatus for about a decade. Both Travis and I worked on the Hill when in in prior jobs, working primarily on those issues. It was about half of what I did for Senator Murray back in the day, working on earmark requests from public and private entities. Now, they don't actually take them from private entities, just publics and nonprofits, but analyzing and understanding, you know, the committees and the offices that are looking said requests, what types of priorities are, in this case, the city's requests or the city's priorities, trying to determine what they are, analyzing what they are, what the opportunities are available, and then sort of presenting them to the staff, hopefully getting a positive resolution, and then putting that through the the administrative process, because often those requests, when they even if they are funded, need some action at the administrative level. But I'll pass it on to Travis to to talk more about that, and then hopefully we'll have a time as we talk about both our approach, how we think we can benefit the the city, and then, you know, also take Q and A at the end of this. But Travis, to Al for any context.
Thanks, Dale. Shelley, thank you so much. And Mayor and Council, thank you for the time and allowing us an opportunity to present to you today. I've got a, we've got a small PowerPoint, and with your indulgence, I'd like to pull it up. It'll, I think, help us sort of expedite this. I know you've gone through a number of items already in the agenda tonight, so we want to we want to be as efficient as possible. And I will share my screen, if that's all right, with you guys, and we will quickly move through this, because I think question and answer is probably the most valuable use of your of your time right now. Can you all see my screen? Yes, great, fantastic. So Dale ran through a little bit about us. Dale's got a long history on the Hill, and one of the things that I really wanted to emphasize is that Dale and I had some of the top jobs in our delegation in dealing with congressional earmarks during the period when they existed prior to twenty twelve. And specifically, we worked with a number of public entities, transit agencies, court authorities, many cities, counties in this effort, and we've got a lot of experience doing this on the consulting side as well. So as we've talked to Shelley and to the staff about some of the challenges of the community that the region are facing, we think that we are particularly well-equipped to to hit the ground running and to start providing value to you all immediately. Just wanted to do a quick overview of our team here at the federal level. Dale's been on since two thousand and five. As he mentioned, we've got Paul Hoover, who is a senior member of Adam Smith's team before leaving the Hill a few years back. I was on the Hill for about seventeen years. My last stint was with Senator Cantwell as their chief of staff from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. And Dave Reichert's also part of our, part of the firm and available to help with us on federal issues as well. So he's a, he's a very valuable tool to the firm, and and as you can imagine, can provide access in in ways beyond sort of your traditional consultants. This is a historic time with federal spending and with the return of earmarks. And I think that this is a particularly timely for the city to pursue federal representation. There's approximately twenty billion dollars that's up for grab for cities, counties, and other public entities around the country each year. And I think it is, you know, it's 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 up to every community to decide whether or not they want to compete for these dollars, but these dollars are out there, they're going to be allocated, and they are going to flow to communities that are participating and advocating for their priorities. So we just want to sort of highlight the scope in the context of the federal spending and 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 just, you know, remind you all of this is a, this is a long time waiting for a number of the communities that were very successful in earmarking ahead of the ban and prior to the pandemic, but this provides a significant new opportunity for local governments to access federal funding, to gain partnership with the federal government in support of local priorities that just has not existed for about a decade now. So we think that this opportunity is very timely. Earmarks aren't the only game in town, though. There are a lot of other authorizing bills, excuse me, that that create eligibility for grant programs, target specific community needs as a means of of focusing federal resources at specific areas. And leaning into these processes can be hugely impactful as cities look to participate in the discretionary grant programs and other channels of federal funding to secure partnership for local priorities.
And just to use an example, what Travis was saying is we worked with the Yakima Group on on the water legislation that took several years to get enacted, that created an opportunity for local communities to access water, funding for for water use and water availability. And that took a little bit of time, but once we created the federal programs, it's obviously federally dictated because the Bureau of Reclamation out out in the Yakima Basin. Once we did that, we've also helped produce federal funding for those those communities.
Also, one of the things that Congress is debating right now is the reauthorization of service transportation programs. This is essentially the authorization that gives the United States Department of Transportation and all sub-agencies the authority to continue to operate and spend. And a number of the programs that dictate how they fund service transportation projects or fund bridge projects or these things, they take input from local communities and counties and others to to identify if there there needs to be sort of tweaks from existing authority, and those are ways to to get a leg up in the competition for grant funding as as these resources are targeted in different ways. We spoke a little bit about about the grants, but just to put it in dollars and cents, about a seven hundred and fifty billion in grants each year allocated to, again, public entities around the country. The last thing we wanted to touch on was just legislation, regulations, and tracking the budget, because all of these things have the ability to impact the city. Just looking at where the city's situated, the transportation corridors that you all have, the the good problems that you have in terms of the economic diversity and growth you've experienced, the growth in population, there are a lot of pieces of legislation otherwise that we think could be helpful to help to to bring additional resources in other ways. I know that that this council has taken a role in being helpful to small businesses through the pandemic and providing grants through CARES and otherwise to help those small businesses thrive. That is something that I was not familiar with just a month ago, as we started looking into the city and 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 the federal priorities and local priorities that you all have. But that's just an example of something that we might be able to be helpful with at the federal level. Know you guys have a number of of environmental issues as well. So the more that we learn about about the city, the more that we can put our creative hats on and identify areas within legislation, regulations, and budget tracking that will be helpful and provide additional resources for the city potentially. I'm going to turn it back over to Dale. We're going to talk a little bit about our just general advocacy approach. And following the conclusion of this, we'll open, turn it back over to you all for any questions and answers that you guys might have.
I mean, it's it's not as is 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 different from the state level in many ways. The the federal government works in a variety of different ways in the sense that it's a year-long process versus a very short timeframe, but it's But it's, it's knowing the key decision-makers, it's knowing what, in this case, the federal legislature and the administration wants to accomplish. It's making sure we understand the City of Bothell's needs. And we're working with staff and the council and the mayor on providing a sort of suite of things that are possible and sort of using our expertise, expertise and, you know, knowledge of those things that may happen to, to create opportunities for the city. So it's, 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 it's strategic development, it's, it's communication with the people that make the decisions. It's then making that direct advocacy. We have an, our federal office is right across the street from the Hart Senate Building. It's right behind the Supreme Court. And, you know, we, we, pre-COVID, hopefully things will get better. You know, we go in and talk to these folks all the time to make those kind of decisions and it's, it's all right there. So it's, it's finding those opportunities, it's realizing what the, the city has and trying to fit those opportunities with the city's needs.
There's a lot that really goes into that. I think a lot of Dale and my legacy work, along with one other staffer, is really the foundation of a lot of the, a lot of the earmark requests as in terms of the process and everything. That was established back in the two thousands, before the earmark ban took place. Having a really keen understanding of what offices are looking at, what the processes are, what the program eligibility requirements are, et cetera, is really what's required to, to elevate the priority of some of these projects, I think, in the eyes of some of the federal decision-makers.
Yeah, and again, as, as Travis mentioned, you know, keeping constant contact, making sure we know everything that's going on. We're, we're close with the process, we know it. It's making sure that the folks at the city and us are not only that, that intake of the advocacy, but also the process as, as we move forward with trying to accomplish the goals of the city. And then once accomplishing some of those goals, then making sure it's, it's, it's followed through, so.
And there are a lot of other areas of local development and planning that we're, we're very familiar with. We know that you all have, you know, a lot of focus on addressing congestion issues. And, and I know that we all understand we can't build our way out of these problems. And so there are a lot of transit programs, other development programs and whatnot that, that we think that we can also bring to the city to help expand sort of the menu of, of opportunities that the city is aware of and that we could pursue. The, the advocacy approach, you know, it, it really boils down to, to helping develop mindshare among a, a group of professional individuals that are working in our delegation that frankly just, you know, are inundated with information and requests. And to Dale's point, just having that, 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 that constant presence there really does make a big difference. We wanted to highlight some of the recent federal successes that we had for some of the cities here in Washington State and to show you, to give you an example of a, some success outside of Washington State. I want to turn it over to Dale. He had more of an active role in, in these specifically.
Yeah, so, so these are more recent than, than most of them from the, from the earmark process. So even absent of this new opportunity, we were able to help deal with project development in a variety of different areas, whether it was transportation, environment, you know, congestion, you know, environment, as I said, water, where we worked with, in this case, that we're presenting both the City of Gig Harbor and City of Pasco on a variety of different things. Some of it was working with the administrative agency. As you see, we were able to work with the Corps of Engineers to help lower the levee system or lower, lower a piece of the levee system. That took a lot of advocacy from the delegation and, and work for us and pressuring people to get that done. And then there's some of these large, as Travis mentioned, the federal government is, is, is looking to almost, it's relatively close. We could see this month, a new surface transportation bill passed with historic spending levels that have these very large grant programs. Under the existing programs, we were able to achieve for, for the City of Bend, which is a beautiful city. I'm sure some of you have been there, a very large grant. And then we were also able to be a part of the, the infra grant process for the Gateway Project, which included most of the Central Puget Sound.
What, we thought this would be helpful in helping identify some areas of federal opportunity that you may respectively have not been familiar with. In particular, the last bullet point under the City of Pasco and the City of Gig Harbor, securing a sand spit. This is a property transfer that we were able to, that we worked on together and were able to secure for the City of Gig Harbor. They've turned this into a beautiful park now. And, and as Dale mentioned, this, this Army Corps lowering of the McNary Levee. I, I will tell you that, that, that project and that priority was not high on anyone's list. And it, and it took constant advocacy, constant, you know, well, evangelism to, to get people to understand what might be possible in completing a twenty-two mile bicycle, bicycle and pedestrian loop, completing access to, to the river system in that community by, by just getting an administrative agency to, to spend the time, frankly, to take a closer look at this and, and to decide to move forward. So these were not funding requests, but had a, had a big impact and has created considerable economic development for both those communities. Couple other examples, Dale mentioned the Yakima Basin Integrated Plan. That's a plan that's still ongoing, very complicated in nature, many stakeholder groups together, coming together to represent various groups in that integrated plan. A lot of controversial issues, we're talking about water storage and water management issues. So some of the most controversial that there are out there these days. Puget Sound Gateway Project, Dale mentioned that as well. Intercity Transit, wanted to throw that out there. Know that, you know, you know, working with Sound Transit, the transportation goals that the community has, you know, transit's a big part. And we've got a lot of experience working on the inside on behalf of transit interests and as consultants. So we wanted to highlight that as well. We know we've taken a lot of your time and we've been talking fast. We are open to follow-up conversations, you know, any supplemental information that you might all need or be helpful as you guys think about federal representation. But at this point, we just wanted to thank you for your time and turn it over to any questions that you all have.
So I'll just add that, 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 sorry about the feedback. Travis and I have been colleagues and friends for so many years, this is very comfortable for us.
We thought, we, we thought we might be addressing some IT issues by, by co-locating here, but I, but.
And originally, you know, I hadn't, I, I hadn't been back to, to Washington State in about ten months. And part of my reasons, obviously, my, I grew up here and I still have some family here. But part, part of what my motivation was, hopefully we would do this in person. Unfortunately, because of the variance, we weren't able to do it. But we're here and, and, and we really thank you, as Travis said, for listening to us and we will take any questions you have.
Deputy Mayor Jones.
First off, thank you very much. Just been really impressed for, with the work that your firm has done for us. There, there is the, I'm going to ask a hypothetical question. And trust my fellow council members will get into more environmental and infrastructure details because there's some big ones on that, like bridges and cleanup, et cetera. But hypothetically, do you represent any of our neighboring cities like Kenmore or Kirkland or Woodenville?
In the state of Washington, the only two cities you represent are Pasco and Gig Harbor. I apologize, we represent a consortium of Aberdeen and Hoquiem on their, their flood control project.
On a federal level, but, but on a state level, do, do you have Kenmore or Kirkland or Woodenville?
I'll, I'll chime in there. Yes, we represent the city of Kenmore, but not Kirkland or Woodenville. We also represent Lake Forest Park.
Okay, okay, okay. All right. So this gets me to my hypothetical question because we are in desperate need for a, and, and I'm speaking for myself and I'll allow the council members to go, tell me to go pound sand or. But from my perspective, we're in desperate need of a regional court, county, a court building up here. We're in desperate need for mental health therapies, therapies and drug addiction therapies that can serve a, a very, I don't want to say large, but a growing population. And so my question is, because I know health was one of the, one of the things that you had worked on. Hypothetically, if some of the other GTW, GTH cities that neighbor Bothell would like to go to a federal level, would you be able to advocate for like a courthouse or a mental health facility? If other cities weighed in and said that they need to do that?
Done it on the count, we represent Benton County and we've, we've done that in Benton.
Okay, all right, all right. Good. That's, that was my biggest question. I'm going to turn the floor over to the rest of council. Thank you.
Have a really quick follow-up on that. I think it's absolutely imperative that we find ways to partner on a larger scale with shared priorities. And, and I think it's undoubtedly, it's something that undoubtedly has to happen with, whether it's with the interstate or other regional thoroughfares, whether it's with share, the Sammamish River, like there are many. Yeah.
No, you're, and you're right, you know, you bring up Sammamish River. Bothell's been desperate to get our piece of Sammamish River cleaned up, but it doesn't help if upstream, you know, we don't have effective water treat, you know, treatments of our stormwater there as well and vice versa. So you're right, it is a team effort on a lot of areas. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, guys. I, I had a question with all of the change that we've seen in DC over the last year or so and with the potential of a reconciliation package coming and potentially much more money available for climate resiliency in some of this administration's priorities. Like, do you see this as a particularly impactful time to do this?
Yes, that's a, a big reason why, talking with Shelley, that this would be help, we think would be helpful for the city. Yeah, it's, it's the administration and a lot of members of Congress, especially on the Senate side and a fair amount on the House side, enough on the House side, want to see that, you know, with a struggling economy and coming out of the pandemic and the general need in our country to, to invest more in our infrastructure that, that, and, and, and just timing, the, the fast act is up for reauthorization as well, that we need to invest in these, these priorities. And if you see the, the, the product that the Senate put together in a bipartisan way with sixty-nine votes, which is difficult in this, in this current political climate to do anything, there, there's a lot of programs, including, Travis's old boss put together, because she's chair of the Commerce Committee, a, a list of priorities that would very much benefit the Pacific Northwest, including a, a specific program to help for Colbert rebuild and, and, and facilitating new, new Colbert construction as well. So yes, the answer is yes, we do think it's a very good time.
And just interim city manager, have we received federal dollars over the last however many years? Like, is this a, a new source of income for us or is this something that we've been tangentially involved in already?
We've tangentially been.
I can almost talk.
In, in that already, just through PSRC for transportation grants. Many of the projects throughout the city have been at least partially federally funded through existing transportation grant programs.
Okay, but you see this as an, a, a way for us to potentially receive much more than that?
I do, and particularly since we have some really large projects coming down the, the road, so to speak, is that the limited funds that we can pursue via those existing grant programs won't get us all the way there.
Yeah, we used, some of the accomplishments, a couple of them were those large infrastructure programs where our client requested funding and then we put the strategy together to advocate in the, in the two cases that we used as examples with the US Department of Transportation. And we're able to get them. I mean, it took, took a lot of effort and a lot of strategy, but we were able to get in with the US DOT face-to-face with the decision-maker at the US DOT and advocate that our, that our clients' projects get funded and they did.
We're very familiar with the regional transportation organizations and with entities, the urban entities like PSRC, the processes that, and the various decision-making entities within that regional governance. But undoubtedly, what we are talking about is supplemental to all that. This is direct advocacy for your constituents, for the taxpayers of Bothell, the City of Bothell, and for Bothell's city priorities. A, a, a moment ago, I did mention partnership, but I just want to be crystal clear. We would evaluate and be able to work with, in a partnership with regional entities to the extent that it, that it furthers a city's priority. And so I just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you. No, I mean, just my two cents overall to the rest of my fellow council members is this seems like quite the opportunity. If not, a lot of our fellow cities are doing something like this. When there is a changing of the guard or a sea change, it seems like really good timing, especially given that earmarks are coming back. I will, I will be voting in favor of this and thank you guys for your time. And I've, I've enjoyed working with Gordon Thomas Honeywell, Shelley and the team. And I'm, I'm sure you guys are fine, too.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to weigh in as someone who's kind of on the receiving end of the work that, that Shelley does. It's invaluable when you're in session and things are going a thousand miles. Your councilmember McAuliffe can speak to this as well, to have someone reminding you of deadlines of, to be able to go and do research on what did that bill say and when, when, when are the deadlines and what are the parameters? And, you know, you have a legislative assistant, but they're, they're doing your schedule, they're scheduling meetings. They're not doing research for you. They're not providing backup support on, on what your part is in, in pushing something forward. And I, I wanted to ask another hypothetical. Say there was a highway expansion project that your city wanted that was suddenly threatened in terms of the timeline. Could you help us find alternative funding, whether it be grants or loans, in order to try to, to make that happen? Like TFI loans, do you, would you be able to help with that process of, of getting loans to make projects move?
I mean, the, the, the low-interest loans are a big part of what the federal government does in a variety of different areas, whether it's water or transportation. And we've done that for our clients. We represent Tacoma Public Utilities and they have, they've put out some loans for some of their water infrastructure projects. And we've worked with the Department of Interior and others to ensure that happens. And we've done it in a few other capacities. And that's kind of a part of what, what we do, we do it well, which is bridging those gaps with the regulators. Particularly, you know, not only working with the regional administrators, but then the headquarters, right? It's in DC and it's far away and trying to get in with them and advocate to them. And we've done that in a lot of different ways. So yes, the answer is yes.
Great. Thank you so much. I will, I definitely am in support of spending the, I really think of it as an investment. If we look over the past few years that we've had Gordon Thomas Honeywell on board, when we look at the return on investment, it's just, it's a no-brainer.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. It was enlightening. I think, I think this is the perfect timing to get involved with you. But, but I want to warn you that you have some pretty big shoes to fill if you want to kind of keep up because Shelley's been knocking it out of the park, guys. I'd like to, I'd like to support this.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you for the presentation and Shelley, the work that you've done at the state level has been just enormous for our community. We can't thank you enough on behalf of the entire community of Bothell. The things that you've done at the, the state level have had a huge impact on our community. So thank you for that first and foremost. I think hiring consultants to be our liaison at the state and federal level, I think, is imperative. But we are also advocates for our community. We're elected officials here in our community and we need to work together in partnership with you to ensure that we are doing the things that our community wants us to do. I was super encouraged to hear and see, I read through the, the, the information, the, the stuff that you've done for other communities. Been to Oregon to, to see the stuff that you've done, done down in Bend has been amazing at best. And I look forward to seeing and hopefully doing some of those things here locally. One of the things that stood out most in your, your conversation tonight has been the, the work that you've done along the river, the, the stuff that you've done. One of the things that stood out most in your, your conversation tonight has been the, the work that you've done along the river, the, the stuff that you've done. We, obviously, you know that we have a river that runs, runs through our community. It's one of the, the most populous waterways for salmon habitat recovery. And if there's a way that we can bring federal dollars in to help our community in, in our goals as the council, obviously, we need to talk about that, but I think it would be something that would be an amazing opportunity for not only the city of Bothell, but for our region to finish the work that we've done there at the Wayne, the Wayne Park area, so the former Wayne Golf Course. You talked about bridges, a little bit of work that you've done around the, the bridge and, and possibly bringing dollars in for bridges. I think that's important. But most importantly, I think being fiscally responsible as a community, as a council is critical. And if we have an opportunity, as Councilmember Doer alluded to, to, to work together to bring these dollars back to our community, I, I think it's, it's an approach that we, that we must take. And, and, and I wanna thank all the council members for their comments, because a lot of the stuff that they talked about and asked was on my list of stuff to, to ask you guys. And I look forward to a partnership if it does pass tonight. And hopefully, when we have this conversation throughout the year, you talk about the, the dollars that you're bringing into our community to benefit our community at home. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The council members have definitely nailed it on this one. I, I firmly believe that the rate of return that we've had, that we've experienced with Gordon Thomas Honeywell over the past few years has, has been great. And, you know, moving on to the federal level where things are more complicated and you need the guidance and assistance even more at that level would pay off because the dollars are even bigger at the federal level. So I think that gives our city, our community an increased opportunity to reclaim some of those regional money. So I, I think this is, as Councilmember Doer placed and said it, a, a no-brainer. And with that, Councilmember Doer.
I'd like to move the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Doer to authorize the city manager to execute in substantially the same form as presented the professional services agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs for 2021, 2022 state and federal government relations services in the amounts of 59,300 and 95,500 respectively, with the second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, City Clerk.
I am not on mute. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Pass the 7-0.
Thank you, everyone, and we look forward to working with you in the very near future.
Thank you all very much, and we will very much look forward to working with you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Bye.
On to AB 21-127. So we'll receive the second quarter report on 21, 20, 2021, 2022 council goals and priorities. And I believe it'll be over to our interim city manager, Aaron Lenhart.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's turned out to be the Aaron Lenhart Show this evening. My apologies. So referencing the council packet, page 267 is where this item begins. And it's very detailed, and I'm just going to hit a couple of highlights. First of all, a reminder that this scorecard is through the second quarter, which is April 1st through the end of June. So a lot of it is a little dated at this point in time, given the lapse of time and we're getting close to the end of your third quarter. But just a couple of things, on the diversity, equity, inclusion front, we did confirm the city approach with some engaged community leaders in this arena that we were on the right track as far as hiring a consultant to move forward with this work. So we did that and, yeah, that consultant on board. Sustainability, our fiscal sustainability, as we just talked about with Gordon Thomas Honeywell, is we received over $600,000 for another phase of the North Creek Trail in the north end of Bothell. And then also safe and secure community, the Bothell Police Department continued their updates to policies in response to new state laws that were in place this last legislative session. So those are just a few of the highlights. And as I mentioned, it's a pretty long report. So I encourage you all to look at the details and just see what the staff has been up to in the arena of accomplishing your priorities this year. And if you have any questions for me, otherwise, that's the extent of my presentation. You're muted.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, thank you, interim city manager. I wondered, we talked about it briefly in our one-on-one. Could you review where we are in each part of the North Creek Trail, which phases are? I, I'm really having trouble figuring out where we, where all the phases are and which sections.
So it's my recollection that we ended up breaking this last portion of the trail, I think, into three smaller phases due to cost. My recollection. And so tonight, I think there were two different items on the council agenda. One was to partner with Alderwood Water and Wastewater District on portion of it, since there will be a bridge crossing the stream and they will be putting their utilities on it. So I believe we have funding to get two-thirds of the way on the last section of the trail. But I'll make sure that the last, that the next scorecard speaks to that specifically.
Can I ask, so which portions of it have yet to be funded?
I wouldn't be able to tell you just off the top of my head.
It would be really, really helpful to have kind of a, a quick visual overview. Just, and I don't know if anyone else would find it handy, but I would find it really useful to know kind of what's remaining and, and, and the cost of finishing. Thank you.
Certainly.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Not really questions, except to say, yes, I would like to know what, what, what are the bits and pieces that are left on, on finishing the trail. So there's, there's a second council member who would like it. And then this, and then the other thing is, thank you, having it all, this all spelled out for us, and I've gone through and looked at it. I don't know what it, I, I'm sure this does it for, for other people as well. But it's so encouraging when you feel like you're just kinda treading water and not getting things done. Taking time to list out your, what you've achieved is very, very helpful. And, and it's very encouraging that, yes, we're getting things done. And yes, you guys, you guys are rock stars. You're getting things done. And, and I appreciate the time to give us those updates. So thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, good evening. I was noticing on page 283, it talked about the fire stations and where they're at. And I was wondering, could we get a little bit more in-depth report from you over how are we doing with that? Where are we at with the permits? When are we gonna start building? Do we have enough personnel to add that aid car that, when the completion of the stations? So I was wondering if, if we have another council member or two that would like that information also.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anything else.
Thank you, council.
And our last item of the evening? Council conversations? I just saw the chief pop on.
Yeah, sorry about that. I just stepped away briefly. Can you repeat the question, please?
Oh, Councilmember Agnew was just asking the city manager for additional information in the fire station design and construction process in the quarterly updates. I don't believe it's a direct question for you at the moment.
Okay, I just saw I got led into the meeting. I thought there was a question I missed. I'm sorry about that. I will stand down.
Thank you for your readiness.
Half readiness.
All right. On to council conversations. Councilmember Agnew. See lots of cards ready to go.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm not sure if anybody else is interested in this, but I, I'm interested in the vaccination policy that the city of Bothell's gonna have, especially for its first responders that are gonna be going out there and touching and treating some of the citizens. You know, we're in a position right now with this pandemic that we didn't have to be in if, if we would have been vaccinated. And it's just sad. It's a sad state of affairs. But, you know, I, I think, I think at some point in time, somebody's gonna have to make a mandate to say, if you're gonna be in the police, if you're gonna be in the fire, if you're gonna be out touching people, you have to get vaccinated. And, and if they don't want to, I'm, I'm sorry. But, but I think we need to take a stand at some point in time. We, we need to nip this in the bud as quick as we nip it in the bud, so to speak. That's, that's what I have to say about that.
Councilmember Doer.
I just, thank you so much, Councilmember Agnew, for bringing it up. I was intending to bring this up myself. I think it's an important conversation for us to have as a city. It's not gonna be an easy conversation and there will certainly be people who disagree, but I think our job is to be leaders, not followers. And I couldn't agree with you more. I have something else to say, but I'll wait if other people wanna talk on this topic.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with councilmembers Agnew and Doer. If you want to work in public safety, I think a big part of that is doing the smallest thing you can to help keep the public safe. And I, for one, am deeply sick of having everything on Zoom and want to do everything we can to keep members in our community safe from interactions that they don't always get to choose that they have with our staff. So I'd be in complete support of vaccine mandates for any city employee that has public contact.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. I, I know that mandates are important, and as a nurse, I also know how important it is for us to have the vaccine and to do our prevention, but I still am a little bit concerned about mandates. So while I believe we should encourage people to have the vaccines who are in those fields that are important for them to be safe, I also believe that mandates might not be our best route to go.
I'll just chime in real quick. Yeah, I think the discussion on the mandates are happening and continue to need to happen at all levels. I know what's been happening at, at the state level is really pushing this conversation and starting those very hard choices for people to make on public safety, personal rights, and kind of all those conversations. But I think we, if we can still convince people and move it, continue to increase the vaccination level through means other than mandates, I, I think we should exhaust those efforts. But the, the conversation about mandates and the repercussions, I think, definitely need to happen and continue moving forward. But we need to, in parallel, continue to encourage everyone by all means that we can to get vaccinated and, you know, stop the spread of the Delta and, you know, prevent the creation of any other variants that could be worse than the Delta. So so, yeah, it's, it's definitely a conversation that is challenging, that we need to continue moving forward.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just not going, I'm gonna change the subject a little bit if I could. So one of the things that's coming before us in the next few meetings is whether or not to close Main Street until December. So here's my, here's my read on this. I think that Main Street should be closed until the pandemic is over. You can't plan ahead to do heaters or winter things for outdoor dining if it stops in December. So you have to say to yourself, during this whole pandemic, if we have to have full capacity inside, when full capacity inside comes about, then maybe that's really open Main Street. But not until full capacity comes. And so that the businesses can plan ahead. You can't invest in a heater. You can't invest in different opportunities of, of what you're gonna spend money on to do outdoor dining if you say December is the cutoff date. So I would say during the pandemic, until they get full occupancy again, we should still close Main Street. So that's my little piece that I wanna add tonight.
Councilmember Doer.
I will meet you at that and raise you permanent closure of Main Street.
Councilmember Thompson.
I would second both of those statements. I mean, I think we've had enough interest on council in terms of at least talking about what a permanent closure would look like, that I'd really like to see staff bring a proposal in terms of how they think a permanent closure would work. I, I mean, I don't think it should open back up. I love it the way that it is right now. And the community has been nearly unanimous in, in that, nearly. It's an important word there. So, and yeah, I, I also agree that, that kicking the can down the road for another few months doesn't make any sense. Like, I would love for the pandemic to be over by December 31st, but it ain't gonna happen. So I do think, I do agree with Councilmember McAuliffe. I think we should give the businesses on Main Street the security to be able to invest in what they need for an entire winter again. And, you know, hopefully, next winter will be a little different in terms of the pandemic. But I, I still look forward to having that space. And I'm, I'm gonna call it open rather than closed. But I look forward to, to seeing that in its current state for some time.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. So I apologize to Councilmember Agnew. I lost internet connection. So I believe he was talking about vaccinations or something, but I, I lost connection. So I didn't wanna jump in on that, that conversation without hearing kind of what was the conversation, talking points. But so I'll, I'll address that later, I guess. As far as the Main Street conversation, I look forward to hearing from the city staff on what we can or cannot do and, and what their recommended actions would be. One of the things that I often think about is equity and inclusion. And that equity and inclusion would be, what are we doing across our entire community versus just one street? So making sure that we at least look at opportunities to do things throughout the city, throughout the downtown, maybe throughout uptown in our north end as well. So just making sure that we have a, a pretty robust conversation around giving everybody equal opportunity. All the businesses within the city of Bothell, I think, would be important. But I look forward to hearing, hearing what the staff recommends on that. I did, if, if it's okay, I'd like to talk about Gene, Deputy Gene, Deputy Mayor Zorn's referred me to a meeting that I had an opportunity to attend with the One Redmond Group and a bunch of early learning business owners. And I got to tell you that it was probably the most impactful meeting that I've, I've ever been at. And listening and hearing from those business owners who are in the early learning profession and the struggles that they're, they're having. And Representative Del Benny hosted that meeting and was there speaking with the group and just listening and learning from them on the struggles that they have in early learning and the impacts that they're having with pay and educating and teaching the educators, the early learning teachers themselves, and what they have to go through to become early learning educators versus becoming a public teacher and, and the amount of money that they make doing it. I think it's important that we find a way to hear from them because there's, there's definitely a disconnect when it comes to how we're paying the early learning educators as opposed to our teachers. And I feel after learning from them, they are just as important as our teachers, and they have the first impact on our kids. I will also, maybe Councilmember Duer can allude to this a little bit because I know she's, she's, she's hearing firsthand these things, but maybe speaking to, you know, people being at home and, and being paid unemployment, making more at home. I think that's supposed to run out here soon from a state perspective or state level. But one of their struggles was, how do you, how do you get people to come back to work that are making more money sitting at home? And it's not just early learning. It's in construction. It's across the board. Many professionals, professionals that I've talked to, business owners, restaurant owners are having the same problem. How do you get their, you know, staff to come back to work when they're making more money at home? And I, and I don't have the answer. I'm just bringing this up because it was an eye opening experience to hear from them and the impacts that it's having on our children. And so I, hopefully, everybody has an opportunity to, to listen and learn from our Representative Del Benny and maybe Councilmember Duer can, can, you know, let us know some information from the state level. And hopefully, they all come and speak to us at some point and, and tell us some of what their needs and concerns are. Thank you.
Councilmember Duer.
I'm not really prepared to give a masterclass on childcare. However, I will say, one of the big issues is that often these childcare workers do not have health insurance. And that is a lot of the reason why they're not going back to work, is because they're at risk. These children don't have, are not vaccinated, and these childcare workers do not have protections. So not only are they paid not even close to a living wage, but they also don't have healthcare. And I'm happy to come back at some point and speak, but the legislature passed a pretty significant childcare funding mechanism and the capital gains tax to try to help help those workers achieve greater financial reward than meager pay that they're getting right now. Because there is no better investment in our future than in early, early learning. And so that's something that I know myself. And almost everyone in the legislature is very highly focused on because we cannot have an economic recovery that doesn't include moms having an opportunity to get back to work and have their children in high quality professional childcare services. So I'm happy to speak to you at another time about more specifics if you want, or we can talk offline. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Zorn's.
I, I love these conversations. If we were sitting around having a cup of coffee, the conversation would just explode because there's so many things that we have to be mindful of. And, and it's good to get those reminders. I hope that people, as we move into cold and flu season, it's very sobering that the time of year when we're supposed to be most healthy, COVID burbles up. And I hear that there's another variant of interest that is in 49 of our states and 40 some odd countries. So we're going to be playing whack-a-mole with this virus for a very long time. So, all that said, we've been isolated, and as we go into cold and flu season, you may not feel like you've lost your sense of smell, but if you have sniffles and there's not a mask mandate specifically when you're around people, you might think about putting a mask on just in case you start exploding. We've got to keep ourselves as healthy as possible. I have a question to ask. Um, you know how we recognize, I was thinking of Eric's Heroes. I don't know if anybody watches the news, but Eric's Heroes is always a fun little segment to watch where someone in the greater Washington State areas showcased that, that most people would walk by and not even notice. And I was thinking, as a council, might we want to monthly or quarterly recognize someone in the community who's just helping out this part of the planet? And give them, give them a little bit of applause and recognition. And we, we, we do that periodically, but could, how do you feel about becoming more purposeful and throwing candidates out and just recognizing people in, in the city who are doing something to just make our city better that no one is maybe noticing?
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And I really truly appreciate that, Deputy Mayor Zorn's, but there's so many people that actually contribute to this community every day. So I wonder in my own mind, how do you just pick one person out? I mean,
Love it. Yeah.
You see the people at the senior center that go there and volunteer and do their part, or, or someone who just, I see this man picking up garbage along my road when I'm walking in the morning. There's so many people. I know what you're trying to say and do, and I appreciate that. But I'm concerned that it's just the bigger picture to recognize all of the people that contribute.
Well, you know, if we were to do it once a month, that's 12 people right there. And if we were to do that over a period of years, if it resonated with people, that's a lot of people we would, we would just end up recognizing. And, and it wouldn't be a big deal. It would be just, you know, part of the mayor's opening up our session, just recognizing this particular person who, and then we would list that off and go on from there. But, but you're right, if that was to set up some, you know, feelings of ill will, that it would be a bad idea, but maybe it would also inspire people.
Councilmember Thompson.
I think it doesn't sound like a bad idea. Like, if people are doing really cool things in the community and we recognize them, I, I, I would enjoy that. And if there are more people out there that need to be recognized, then we can recognize them too. And if there are so many people that are out there that we, we can't fit them all, maybe we could do two every month or start off at some level. But I, I think that sounds like a lovely idea. I'd be just curious to see what the mechanics of that behind choosing somebody would look like.
Councilmember Duer.
Um, I love your heart for building community, Councilmember Zorn's. And I have a suggestion because I think, I think what Councilmember McAuliffe maybe is alluding to is the amount of effort and time and process that could be involved in doing that. And so my simple suggestion is, every month, a different council member gets to pick somebody. And then there's no bureaucracy. Just a thought.
Deputy Mayor Zorn's.
Do you remember the card? Uh, yeah, no, that would be a great idea. I was thinking form a committee, but yeah, council members who wanted to do it, took turns on it. That would be great because certainly don't want to put that on staff.
No committees, no.
No more meetings.
Well, maybe, you know, you know, maybe that would be a committee report or a community report, part of our, maybe that would be something we put in, I don't know. Maybe we would just mention somebody, a hometown hero here during council conversations. And we took turns as council members. I don't know. Noodle the idea. If it, if it resonates with you, we can talk about it next time.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And I would like to pursue that further. I think that's a very good idea. And recognizing people in our community, if we just chose someone to say this month, we really want to recognize someone who picks up the garbage on the street even, you know? I mean, I think there's people that do honorable things every day. So if each council member kind of just wanted to say something, I think it's a great idea. But I want, I want to say thank you very much to the city of Bothell and to all of you who have the flag at half staff on Sunday, the day we celebrated my husband's life. So I just want to say thank you for that. That meant a very lot to me and my family. And thank you, Tom Agnew, for sending me the beautiful picture of it, of the flag at half staff.
Councilmember Duer.
So the thing that I mentioned that I wanted to say way back at the beginning was, I'm sure all of my fellow council members would join me and, and, and giving you condolences for, for a very deep loss. You were married for a really long time, and I'm sure it's been very, very difficult. But I hope that your memories and your children give you some solace.
Yes, tomorrow will be 58 years. And yes, I have a wonderful family. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Agnew.
Uh, Councilmember McAuliffe, that was the least I could do. Thank you very much for your husband and, and what he's done for the city. And going back to Deputy Mayor Zorn's, why don't we just pick the best in Bothell?
Oh, I like that idea. That's a great idea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to join in giving my condolences to Councilmember McAuliffe. You had many years together. May his memory be a blessing to you and yours. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to call you Rosemary tonight. My family, the McNeil family is with you. We've always been with you, and we thank you. And Colleen sends her best to you and the family as well. So we just wanted to, to share that with you. I, I, I have to tell you a quick story. When, when Jim rolled up and we were, we were working to save the Wayne of golf course for our community in the region. I'll never forget the day that he rolled up in that Rolls Royce. And the smile on his face when that, that, that top was down, I'll never forget. And that's the day that my kids had the opportunity to meet him for the first time. And that, that is a memory that will last for a lifetime. So, so thank you for sharing him with us for all these years and everything that you've done, your family has done for our community. So I just wanted to share that. And then I do have one more topic. When we talk about public safety and the fire, I'd like to see if council is open to hearing more updates on how we're doing. We spoke a little bit about our levies earlier, and I'd like to see if council would like to hear more updates on our, our fire station levy and police public safety levies, like we do kind of like the streets and sidewalks, and see if, you know, council's open to having more presentations on just how we're doing. With those levies, I think the community spoke loud and clear on the work that they'd like us to do, and I think we're doing amazing work. I think it'd be, it'd be great to be able to celebrate and at least get the message out on what we're doing there. So just wanted to get the council's opinion.
Deputy Mayor Zorn's.
I got opinions. Uh, yes. I would, I would love updates. The, the public really wants to know, and they are invested in, in wanting to know what the latest is, both with fire and police. So yes, I, I would support getting more frequent, comprehensive updates to make sure that we're delivering on what we said we'd deliver on with the bond and levy.
Councilmember Agnew.
Totally agree. Totally agree. We need to, we need to be informed. We need to find out how both those entities are doing. Those are the people that have the most impact with our citizens. They're the ones that are out touching their, and, and seeing most of our citizens in their worst times. So I definitely want more information.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
And thank you. I'm not sure I was unmuted last time. Tomorrow would be my 58th year anniversary. And I want to tell you that when we had this tragic accident, the firemen and the policemen that came and the respect and the support they gave us was unbelievable. So I, I, I want to do everything I can to support them because when they are needed, they are there for us and for all of our community.
So maybe a follow up question is, is how often were, was everyone thinking on the updates? Because I know we get updates at some interval now, but it sounds like there wanted to be an increase in those updates. So I wonder if anyone had a timeframe in their mind. Councilmember Thompson.
I would say, like, less than like a mandatory, you need to come back every three months, like when there's a change in the product or project status. Like when there is something that is different than there was last time, like come, talk to us about that. I mean, I am all for getting updates. I don't know that it's best to say, like, we need updates every three months if there's nothing significant to update. Although, now that I think about it, after three months, I would hope that there would be something significant to update.
Deputy Mayor Zorn's.
Yeah, I was going to say, if there's nothing to update at three months, we need to know that, why there's nothing to update at three months. Does that make sense? So I guess my inclination would be monthly, unless if both chiefs feel that it would be an email to council. There's so little information, we could just have it skip a month and get an email update. But yeah, monthly would be good. And, and maybe, maybe that's what we want. Although I think there needs to be a piece that's public on this. But, you know, maybe it doesn't always have to be public. It could just be an email that we get.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yeah, I think the intent was, is just more to get information from them, how things are going, how they feel things are going. The financial piece of it, you know, that can be quarterly, but just having an understanding of where we are in the process and things that are moving forward. Timelines always get moved around when it comes to these things. So it's just having an understanding. So when community members reach out to us, we have information to give them that's current and updated.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
That we've all discussed everything. And if we don't have anything more, I move adjourned.
Councilmember Duer.
Second that motion. Nice call.
All right, looks like everyone's in favor. I don't see one shaking their head.
Mayor, may I have 30 seconds before we leave?
Councilmember Thompson.
Um, I just, it, it kind of goes back to a former topic. I just wanted to ask the interim city manager, is we look and decide what we want to lobby federally for. Right now, we don't have any planners in our Parks Department, and we have some parks, things that I'm, I'm sure we would like to fund. You know, we have the Sheltonview Forest. We would love to see more parks up in Snohomish County. And so I was just hoping that we could have some sort of staff allocated to trying to figure out what parks projects we're going to lobby the federal government for. And you don't need to answer right now. I just wanted to say that before it slipped my mind.
Sounds like an excellent topic for our mid biennium budget update. All right. Have a great night, everyone. Great to see everyone back. Welcome fall.
Nicely done. Goodbye, everybody.
All right, have a good.
Good night. Good night.